C would be conference with legal counsel pending litigation. Claim of Parkeia Incorporated, claim number 21-0167. D would be conference with legal counsel pending litigation. Claim of Op Guardia, claim number 21-0065.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, do you anticipate reporting on any of these items?
Mr. Mayor, I anticipate reporting out on item 1C.
Thank you. We will now recess into closed session. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 16, 2021 Glendale City Council meeting. Due to the evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable spectrum and Charter Cable Channel 6 and AT&amp;T Eures Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandelca.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting live streaming, which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, which is on the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Agajanian.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Najarian. I will lead the flaxle. Please join me in the flaxle.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Father, we first give thanks for the blessings that you have bestowed upon this community and ask that you keep us embraced in your care. Grant our council wisdom and compassion as they conduct the business of this great city and let their decisions be in accordance to your plan. Finally, help us to live our lives in a matter that reflects your teachings. Amen.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item would be the agenda for the February 16, 2021 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Tuesday, February 9, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next would be presentations and appointments. The regular housing authority and city council meeting for February 23, 2021 have been canceled. The next regular meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, March 2, 2021.
Thank you. What's next, please?
Appointment of the boards and commission member by councilmember Najarian, Haig Cartunian, Sustainability.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to officially place Haig Cartunian.
One second. Is there... Okay, Mr. Najarian. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to place the name of Haig Cartunian for the council for appointment to the Sustainability Commission. Haig may be well-known to you. He's a graduate of Claremont Graduate University with a master's, and he also went on to Pepperdine for an MBA. He is currently the Public Affairs Manager for Southern California Edison, and he is responsible for engagements with the government associations, including the League of California Cities, the California State Association of Counties, SCAG, government councils, and other. Haig is very qualified. He will work to conduct an assessment of the environment and infrastructure hazards and provide the council with proposed solutions to those challenges, including public health initiatives, climate adaptation, wildfire mitigation, reduction of vehicle miles traveled, waste management, conservation of scarce resources, equitable access to recreation and green space, and improved stakeholder engagement. Haig also, in his early years, was a district representative for Congressman Adam Schiff. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I place Haig Cartunian for nomination to Sustainability.
Thank you. Before I go for somebody to second it and we vote on Haig Cartunian, I just want to mention something that has nothing to do with this candidate. I'm having a problem recently, the way this application for appointment to the city board and commissions has been presented recently. I'm not happy with it because we cover home address where we had before it was in open. Okay, we don't want to give home address. Home telephone number, we cover it. Cellular phone number is covered. Email address. Email address of a person who comes forward as somebody to serve to the public, I mean, it's covered. Then we say more unbelievable. We say number of years lived in Glendale. It's covered. I just want to see this person maybe yesterday came to the city and now it's nominated for... I'm not talking... But again, I want to mention, I'm not talking about this specific candidate generally. I don't know what happened. How come it became... I don't know. People may... They may not know. It's all covered black. There is nothing here except his name, any candidate recently. But why I... Public, these people, they came forward to deal with public. They have to know who the commission is on this board or any other board. It's public's right to know even their phone number, email address, and how long he has been here, the person, how long lived in here. So what's the reason we are covering?
Mr. Mayor, I'll work with the clerk's office on appropriate redactions from those forms.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, now, do I have a second? Do I need a second?
You do not need a second, Mr. Mayor.
No? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian.
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item would be consent items. Following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of the council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay. Before... One second, I have to read...
Mayor.
Yes.
Can you please read that during council comments if you don't want?
All right. Okay, Ms. Devine.
Yes, I'd like to pull item 4E from the consent calendar.
4B? E. 4E. One second. Let's see which one it is. 4...
The letter in opposition for B. Griffith Park tram.
D, like David.
4D. D. David. Okay. So you want to pull that item?
It is... It is 4E. As in Edward.
Mr. Mayor.
There was a revision to the agenda, and I believe 4D is now... 4E is now 4D.
That's correct, Councilmember Kasakian. That's correct.
Okay. I don't have it. That's the one.
Letter.
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian.
Yes.
Now, 4D.
Thank you.
Community development regarding letter opposing Griffith Park aerial transit system. One motion authorizing the city manager to send a letter drafted by staff opposing Griffith Park aerial transit system.
Thank you, Ms. Devine.
Yes. You know, I just wanted to let everybody know I've just recently been informed that two of the routes that have been suggested for this tram have been eliminated, leaving only two remaining. One is from Warner Brothers, and the other is from Martinez Arena, which is the one that would affect us the most. And this would devastate our peaceful walking, riding trails in both Glendale and Burbank. I received an email from a Mr. Eisenberg, and he requested or suggested some changes, and I feel he has some good points. Of course, first of all, is a typographical error. But the original mandate came from Mr. Griffith, not the family, and I'd like to see that corrected. And just as simple changes in, for instance, in the second paragraph, further degrading, not eroding. And again, Colonel Griffith was the one that mandated this contribution. The next paragraph, in the same vein, the natural condition of Griffith Park will be altered again in what seems a conflict with Colonel... Actually, with Colonel Griffith. And then finally, the ATS appears to be envisioned without adequate connection, not without any, but without adequate connection. And that would be it. I want to thank staff for writing this letter. It's a good letter. I think it states everything that we want to say and makes the points that the council wanted to make. And I think the friends of Griffith Park will be happy with this. So when... After we hear from my colleagues, I'd be happy to move this item.
Thank you, Mr. Golany.
Yes, Mr. Member of City Council. Councilmember Devine, we can certainly make those changes in the letter before I sign and send it off.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
Do I move the item?
But do we have to vote on this now, right?
Yes.
With the corrections?
Yes.
I would second that motion with those corrections.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian.
Yes, and this was item 4E, which now is 4D.
D.
Right.
D.
Now is D. Before was E. Okay. All right. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item would be city council staff comments.
All right. I want to read a statement here to Bloomberg Philanthropies, and this is the letter which I'm sending. I'd like to make a quick announcement. The city of Glendale is seeking ideas for the community as part of the 2021 Global Mayor's Challenge sponsored by Bloomberg Philanthropies. We are seeking ideas that can move our city forward from the COVID-19 pandemic. Especially, we are looking for ideas in one or more of the following categories. One, health and well-being. Two, climate and environment. Three, economic recovery and inclusive growth. Four, good governance and equality. If you have any idea that falls into one of those categories, visit my Glendale City News or the MyGlendale Twitter account for more information on how to submit your idea to City Hall. Deadline to submit has been extended to February 22. So February 22 is the deadline. Thank you. Now, Ms. Devine, you had a comment to make? Did you raise? Okay. Is there any comment? Mr. Kasakian. Mr. Kasakian. Go ahead, Mr. Kasakian.
I have a city council meeting today on...
I don't hear. I can't. Try again.
No.
So you want to...
Hear me now. Hello?
Yes. Yes.
So I apologize for that technical picture. I don't know what it was. But I'd like to make a couple of nominations for commissions. To transportation and parking, I'd like to nominate Shawna Bonston. I'd like to... For the CDBG Board, I'd like to nominate Armie Gavad. I would like to reappoint and bring forth the nomination of Armie Gavadisian, who is currently serving on that in that capacity and has for some time. And for the Sustainability Commission, I bring forth the nomination of Rondi Warner.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Devine. Ms. Devine.
Councilmember Devine, you're needed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of announcements, just kind of not really chores or tasks, but just kind of information I'd like for the community to be aware of. First of all, kudos to our Glendale Police Department for all the hard work they're doing. If you haven't seen the Glendale Police Department news releases, they've been making a lot of arrests and doing a lot of work out there. But one very interesting one was the... What started as a fraudulent purchase investigation by Glendale Police Department, Detective Christopher Brewer, to mention one, turned into a grand larceny indictment by the New York City District Attorney against a man who allegedly stole $1 million using after Kevin Hart's credit card. But what I want to say is that the New York District Attorney Katz acknowledged Detective Christopher Brewer of our own Glendale Police Department for his contribution to this case. So good work. Good work. Second of all, I want to let everyone know that Reflect Space from our central library, in observance of both Black History Month and the city's reckoning with the racial politics of the past, Reflect Space has produced a multimedia series which examines our past and how these policies impacted our city. It's a six-episode series. Episode number one is now on... Is now streaming. I want to thank Ara and Anahid Oshagon and Shannon Holmes for curating this exhibit. And if you'd like to watch it and to enjoy it, go to reflectspace.org/reckoning. So I think that's something that we should be proud of, that it's another way that we are honoring Black History Month and also educating our residents about our past. And finally, I'd like to request, Mayor, that we adjourn our meeting this evening in memory of Ruby Devera. A lot of us know Ruby from as being a strong pillar of the Filipino-American community who passed away at age 75, three days after her birthday. The Filipino-American community of greater Los Angeles lost a great leader, as did Glendale, and a strong pillar. She is well-respected in the civil and the civics... As a civil and civic servant. She worked in different capacities for the city of LA, but she was a true public servant in her mind and heart. She was very active in Glendale and adjacent cities. All she ever wanted was to get the Phil-Am community ahead, recognized, and respected. She genuinely cared and helped so many citizens in different ways. She was a true leader in our community, as she was active in local Catholic churches, the Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale, and the Democratic Party. And of course, she was on the board. I served with her on the board of the Adventist Medical Center Advisory Board. She's survived by her husband, her daughter Teresa, and her son and several grandchildren. So tonight, I'd like to request that we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Ruby.
We will do. Okay. Is there any... Mr. Brotman. Councilmember Brot.
Thank you. I have three items. Firstly, I was... I wanted to ask staff if they could do a little bit of research into the parking utilization and the developments on Central. Are they, you know, seeing shortages of parking that could spill over into neighborhood streets? Or are there surpluses and spaces going unused? I've discussed this with staff already. Just looking for a brief memo, and it's not particularly urgent. The reasoning behind this is that, you know, we had this discussion about the Armenian American Museum and Cultural Center recently. We were talking about parking requirements downtown. And I've been thinking about our current codes and whether they're consistent with efforts to reduce vehicle miles traveled and whether they're consistent with efforts to reduce costs for residential development, which obviously contribute to our affordable housing problem. So I kind of wanted to see if we could do something to shine some light on this question. So that was one thing. The next is, we all received a letter from the Coalition for an Anti-Racist Glendale about the January 6th insurrection in DC. In that letter, there were some questions about our HR policies towards anybody on our staff who participated in or show support for any of these extremist and hate groups, whether through social media posts or some other ways. And anyway, I was on this one hoping that staff could just respond briefly to talk to our policies around this question.
Okay. Mr...
I have one more item, but I'll wait till staff responds.
Mr. Golany.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Member of City Council, Councilmember Brotman. Just wanted to make sure that we get a second on the parking utilization research before we can add that to our tracking list.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Brotman, Member of City Council, in response to your inquiry, and yes, we have received letters from the community. I just wanted to reassure everyone, including the public, that we do take these matters very seriously. And as such, we have... We do have provisions in our administrative policy manual that specifically deals with these kinds of issues. Not necessarily white supremacy, but dealing with extremism as a whole. We also make this a part of our anti-harassment training that we've been providing to all city employees every other year for the past 20 years, even though up until last year, the law only required such training for supervisors. Additionally, we vigorously enforce these policies through investigation and discipline in a zero-tolerance fashion. Any statements or actions exhibited in support of white supremacy or any kind of extremism or the use of racial, ethnic slurs by our employees will be dealt with disciplinary action that could result in termination. If you could indulge me, I'd like to just read off some of these examples in our APM that pertain to unlawful conduct, racism, and extremism. These are, again, in general terms. As far as standards for conduct are concerned regarding use of city resources, there is expectation to exercise judgment in accordance with good management practices and be guided by the highest ethical standards. When it comes to social media use, the social media site articles and comments containing any of the following forms of content shall not be allowed. I'll just read of some of the more important... More pertinent items that include comments in support of or in opposition to political campaigns or ballot measures, profane language or content, content that promotes, fosters, or perpetuates discrimination on the basis of race, creed, color, age, religion, gender, national origin, physical or mental disability, or sexual orientation, conduct or encouragement of illegal activity, information that may tend to compromise the safety or security of the public or public systems. As far as third-party websites are concerned, we have... The city doesn't endorse any of these third-party websites or associated organizations or persons. These sites that are owned or managed by a political party, candidate, or a special interest group, or are of a political nature that are associated with, sponsored by, or serving a candidate for elected office, any political party organization supporting or seeking to defeat any candidate for elective office or ballot proposal. Sites containing any materials that may reasonably be considered offensive, defined as sexual content or images, slurs against race, religious, political beliefs, age, gender, sexual orientation, national origin, or physical attributes. Or sites that provide or promote false, slanderous, illegal, infringing, or inaccurate information. Additionally, all city employees shall be required to affirm the oath of office expressing commitment to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California. Lastly, unacceptable uses listed, such as comments that may demean or offend an artist's race, religion, national origin, ancestry, disability, medical condition, marital status, sex, sexual orientation, or age, threats, insults, or attempted intimidation, et cetera, as I mentioned, will be dealt with disciplinary action that could result in termination. I hope that answers your inquiry. Councilmember Brotman, Matt Doyle, our HR director, and Chief Pavelis Litas are also available if you needed more details.
No, thank you, Rubik. That was very thorough, and I just wanted to have the opportunity to hear that and for everybody to hear that, because we did receive that letter. Wanted to acknowledge that. My last one is, another letter that we received was from the Glendale Environmental Coalition. It was a very well-researched and comprehensive letter of concern about plans to install artificial turf in several parks around the city. I understand that this issue is coming to the Parks Commission in March. I might be wrong, so perhaps somebody could clarify that. And I just want to make sure that this happens and that there's ample time for us to discuss this issue before the projects come to City Council. I do share the concerns that GEC enumerated about artificial turf in the city. I think plastic grass runs counter to the goal of reducing the urban heat island effect, and it also has some other negatives to it. And I want to make sure we really look very carefully at the alternatives before we move forward with any of these projects.
Thank you. Mr. Golany.
Mr. Mayor, Member of City Council, Councilmember Brotman. I'm not sure if Oni Bolinikian's on the line, and he could respond to the question regarding the timing of going to the Parks Commission with those projects. But we do have, and you are correct, as part of the Fremont Park renovation project, it includes artificial turf. This was vetted through the previous council, but we will be more than happy to bring you and Councilmember Kasakian up to speed as to those conversation and justification behind why the artificial turf was proposed. what, why the artificial turf was proposed. Obviously, we will read through GEC's research and we'll schedule briefings with you to, to go over them, and then, project will not move forward unless council approves. The first step would be the adoption of plans and specifications. But we will have opportunities to, to have conversation and discuss those before we bring it to council.
Okay, thank you. And, and I guess in the passage of time since this was last discussed, I think there have been some changes in the technology of alternatives, at least of one alternative. And there probably have also been changes in the technology of the artificial turf. So it's probably worthwhile relooking at this.
Definitely. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And is there any other comment by my colleagues? If not, okay. I will go to now, community events. Now, I would like to take any calls from the public as it relates to community event announcements. We will be taking five callers, if there is any. Each will be given three minutes to share their comments. Do we have any calls?
Mayor, I do not have any callers.
Okay, so we are done with that. Okay, next item, please.
Next item would be eight action items. Eight-day community development regarding consideration of ordinance to ban sale of flavored electronic smoking products in the city of Glendale. One ordinance for introduction, meaning section 5.94.020 and 5.94.150, and adding section 5.94.160 related to banning the sale of flavored electronic smoking products.
Thank you, Mr. Golany.
Yes, Mayor Agajan, Member City Council, I'm going to turn it over to Bradley Calvert, our Assistant Director of Community Development, for a brief presentation.
Mr. Calvert.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. As mentioned, we are here to discuss the banning of flavored electronic smoking products. Let me pull up my presentation here. This is a relatively brief presentation. We just want to outline what this entails, and this is also to introduce the ordinance as well. So just quick overview, we want to give some background on why we're here tonight and why we are discussing this. Introduce the, the draft ordinance and then provide alternatives for council to decide on. Oops, I apologize, I think this is not in full screen. There we go. So as we discussed back in 2019, there, there are several different devices on the market, and these are just some of those that are illustrated right now. Some of these are small, some of these are large. Some of the concerns that have been brought up about these is about the ability to conceal some of these devices, how they are easy for youth to use. This is much of how we have gotten here is, is how electronic smoking products have been advertised towards youth and the detrimental effects. But this is just a little bit of background on what some of those devices can look like. So they can be as large as something that looks like
Excuse me, Mr. Calvert.
Yes.
Can you bring the microphone closer to you? Because you're talking
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yeah? Bring it as close as you can.
I'll try to be as close as I possibly can here. So these devices can range in size. They can be large tank devices, or they can be very small devices that look like USB sticks, essentially. This is where some of that concern was raised about the, the scale of the devices and how they can easily be used by, by youth. But really, one of the reasons why we arrived at this discussion back in 2019 was there were a rash of incidents, essentially. People who were becoming ill, in some cases even people that had died from the use of electronic smoking products. As you can see, kind of the breakout based on age, this particularly affected those between the ages of 18 and 24. There were some as well, at 15% that were underneath the age of 18. So really, those between the ages of under 18 and 24 years old made up a majority of those who had some sort of injury or even fatality when using these electronic smoking products. One caveat, really two caveats to this, is 82% of those patients that, that did become ill did report using some sort of THC-based product as well. Just a clarification that we think was important to acknowledge, since those rash of kind of injuries and illnesses, the CDC has stopped tracking these, these instances. So we do not have any more recent data. In fact, this data is actually very similar to what we had seen back when we had first presented on this in 2019. But because of those incidents, a number of actions had been taken, particularly at the federal level. This did cause a raise in the minimum smoking age across the United States for tobacco products. It was raised, raised from 18 years to 21 years. The FDA also put a temporary ban in place in January of 2020, banning most fruit and mint-flavored e-cigarette products. This did exclude tobacco-flavored and menthol-flavored products. And they were also, companies were also required to go through a certification process in order to demonstrate that their products were safe. And this included analysis of the chemicals that were included, the, the balance of nicotine that was included in those products as well. But they essentially had to go through the certification process to, to continue the sales of their nicotine products. The state of California also took their own action. In September 2019, there was an executive order issued by the governor to develop recommendations regarding illegal and counterfeit e-cigarette products. This was largely in response to the number of illnesses and deaths that did occur, as many of those were, the origins were kind of counterfeits and illegal products, not those sold by more reputable vendors. Public awareness campaigns were also started to focus on kind of proper signage and stricter age verification requirements. This is really targeted at the fact that there was a lot of belief that some of these flavored products especially were being targeted at youth. Because of that, in November of 2019, the state of California actually sued Juul Labs, one of the, the top manufacturers of electronic cigarettes, for both their marketing and their sales practices. And that was under the premise that they were advertising and attempting to attract, attract youth to use their products. On June 20th, 20, California Senate Bill 793 was, was introduced. This was a bipartisan bill that wanted to ban the flavored tobacco products. This included both electronic and traditional combustible products, cigarettes, cigarettos, inexpensive cigars, things of that nature. Also introduced an e-product tax, as many of these sales are conducted online, and, and also for the electronic products themselves. It was a $2 tax for every 40 milligrams of nicotine that was sold. In August of 2020, Senate 793, Senate Bill 793 was signed into law. It was anticipated to take effect on January 1st of 2021. A referendum was brought forth by the California Coalition for Fairness. It was qualified, and essentially that put this Senate bill on hold until November of 2022 during the general elections. Some of our neighboring jurisdictions, City of Burbank in October of 2019, they amended their retail tobacco sales prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco products. This did include hookah products for cultural reasons. This went into effect in November of 2019. Currently Pasadena is drafting a report to their city council on their approach to banning products. And Los Angeles County in October of 2019 voted to ban the sale of flavored tobacco and e-cigarette products. So this included both e-cigarette products and tobacco, traditional combustible forms of tobacco. And they provided retailers 180 days to remove products from their shelves. We also know that Long Beach is currently in process as well as of creating their own regulations regarding the sale of these flavored products. In January of 2021, City of Los Angeles, their Health, Education, Neighborhood Parks, Arts, and River Committee is currently working on a strategy to restrict the sale of flavored e-cigarettes, electronic products. The City of Beverly Hills, also in January of 2021, prohibited the sale of flavored tobacco products, which also included e-cigarettes, but did exclude premium cigars from that category. And then also Glendale Unified School District in November of 2019 had filed a lawsuit against Juul Labs on the, under the same premise of the state of California, again, for their marketing practices towards youth. That litigation is still in progress, so we do not have a current update for that. So essentially, what we are bringing forth today to, for introduction as an ordinance would be to amend sections 5.9420 and 5.94.150, and add section 5.94160 to the Glendale Municipal Code. These amendments would ban the sale of flavored electronic smoking devices and products. This includes flavors, but not limited to menthol, mint, wintergreen, fruit, chocolate, vanilla, anything that is not of a tobacco flavor origin. Currently, the ordinance is drafted in a way where retailers would have up to 30 days to remove these products from their shelves. So alternative one for council to decide on would be to introduce this ordinance to ban the sale of flavored electronic smoking products and devices. Alternative two would direct staff to amend the ordinance in the manner that council sees fit. And alternative three would be any, any additional alternative that council may want to consider. That concludes the presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Who was, oh, Mr. Kusakian.
Thank you to staff for this presentation and report. So if we wanted to adopt what the state passed before there was a referendum from folks in tobacco industry, which alternative is that? Would that be number two?
Correct. Correct. That would be alternative number two, and that would, to go back and amend it to include combustible and traditional tobacco products.
Okay, and that would be what, what passed at the state level? Which unfortunately, now there's, there's potentially a stay of the enforcement of that, correct?
If that is what, yes, that, that is correct. It'll be put before voters in November 2022, and the amendments would be per what council recommends this evening. So if council directed us to amend this based on the original state law, then those are the changes we would make.
So, Mr. Mayor, that would be my desire. Can I ask a question?
Okay, Mr. Ms. Divine. Ms. Divine, you are not connected.
I always forget. So would that be a ban to, on all flavored tobacco products, not just e-products? Bradley?
Pending City Council direction.
Yes, okay, well, I would go, I would absolutely go for that. So that's my opinion. I think we've reached a point now where, you know, GUSD is suing Juul, we have Senate Bill 793, LA County Board of Supervisors banned flavored tobacco products, Burbank's banned them, Passit, you know, let's, I think it's time we get on, on board. I think the more I read about these flavored tobaccos, the more I realize the damage that's being done. I was in the school systems, I know, I met with Girl Scouts in La, La Cucina area, and they, all they talked about, and this was back when we, they were able to go to school, were the kids holding these e-cigarette, e, what, vape, whatever they are, in their hands and hiding them from the teachers. I, I just think we need to ban all flavored tobaccos from our, our community.
So you are, which alternative you are offering, Ms. Divine?
Well, this is, I, I was assuming it was a new alternative that that would, this would not just ban, not just ban the sale of flavored electronic smoking devices, but ban flavored tobacco products in Glendale.
So that's not one or two, then?
No.
Or you are offering one or two? Not one, not two?
I, I believe it's essentially two. It's essentially to enforce what the state passed, which would be alternative two, from my understanding from staff. Is that correct, Mr. Calvert?
That is correct.
Yes. All flavored tobacco, regardless of whether it's through an e-device or otherwise, with the caveat that at the state level, there was no omission of hookah, and that would be, continue to be allowed.
Okay, so when they, when this alternate, alternative two says we'll ban the sale of flavored electronic smoking devices and products, that means, in essence, all flavored tobacco products?
If council's direction is to ban all flavored tobacco products, that would include electronic devices, that will include traditional cigarettes as well as cigarettos. If we were following the, the precedent set by other cities, they would exclude premium cigars as part of that, though. That's what Beverly Hills has done, and that's what some other cities have also proposed as well.
How about hookah?
Hookah would be excluded. I, I think one thing to also clarify with council is, is whether or not this would also apply to menthol, and if menthol would just fall into that category of flavor. As of right now, we do not classify menthol as part of flavor, or it really would be up to council's direction if you wanted to classify that as part of all tobacco products, including traditional cigarettes.
What did the state vote, what did the state pass when they passed it?
This is about all flavored, anything except for traditional tobacco flavors.
Then, that's what we, that's, that's at least where I am at.
I agree.
Councilmember Divine is as well.
Okay, but it's, but you, that's not, hookah is not part of it. I just want to make sure.
It is not.
No.
The state, the state excluded hookah in premium cigars.
All right. Okay, okay. Councilmember Bratman. Councilmember Bratman.
Yeah, I'm going down the same path of just clarifying these different orders in different locations. And I think we're going to have at least three votes on council for extending this beyond our current ordinance. I just want to make sure, we have LA County, and we have the state, and we have Burbank. Can you just do a compare and contrast? It's very clear, because I, I think I get the state now. The state is all flavored products with an exception for premium cigars and hookah, and that does include menthol in the ban, right? That's the state. Can you just compare that to LA County? Because I think I remember that LA County did not exclude hookah, and I think I remember Burbank did make an exception, but they identified only specific locations, lounges, where it would be allowed to be sold. So if you could just, I, I want to be crystal clear on these differences. I think we're all going down the same path. I just want to make sure that we're, ideally, I think we should be, you know, it would be great if the state and the county were all consistent, but I don't know if they are.
Mr. Calvert, you want to comment on that?
Yes, so the, the state and, the state did ban anything flavored with the exception of hookah. Burbank was the same. We would have to look into whether or not that was based on establishment or not. I, I do know that for Burbank, they did ban electronic hookah, though, because that did fall under the classification of flavored devices. So traditional hookah was acceptable, but not, not electronic hookah. We would have to look into whether or not that was based on, if it was conducted in, in a sort of establishment or not.
Yeah, I had, I, I could be wrong, but my, my recollection is that they called out specific locations by name and said, you know, at these locations, you can go, it's their business, you can go in, I think, you know, you have to be 21, you can go in and enjoy it there. But it's, it's not sold as a product. Just because somebody puts hookah on it, it's not sold in the stores as a product. I could be wrong. And my understanding is that in LA County, they say, they say no hookah, period. And I think they say no premium cigars, period. So I, I just want to be clear on that. I mean, I would, I would go with LA County. I would go with the strictest we, we could do. If there's a strong support for allowing, you know, a carve-out for particular hookah lounges, or hookah lounges in general, I could live with that. So I just want to make sure we're all, we're all sure what we're deciding on.
Mr. Najari. Councilmember Najari.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, yeah, it was, it was over a year ago that, that this was hot in the news, and I think I was one of the council members that asked for it to come before council. I'm happy extending it. But let's just, you know, let's just clarify, menthol cigarettes considered flavored? So thumbs down on them. How about Swisher Sweets? Those are little cigars. I have a, a gentleman friend of mine who smokes Swisher Sweets, and they, I think they're sweet. Is that considered a flavor? And would that be considered banned by our current discussion? Bradley?
Ultimately, that would be up to the council to, to decide. What we've seen and other precedents is that those fall under that category of cigarettos. That's where some jurisdictions have drawn the line between a premium cigar and then what you're describing there to
Low-buck, low-buck cigar. So a premium cigar, and I'm not a cigar guy, but they're usually not flavored. I mean, they're pure tobacco, and that wouldn't be affected by our, or are we going to put a price tag on, on the cigar to differentiate the premium? And that wouldn't be affected by our, or are we gonna put a price tag on, on the cigar to differentiate the premium and the sub-premium smokes?
We would use price as a determinant. If I am not mistaken, some cities have used $25 as that threshold. So $25 and up, it was acceptable below.
Per cigar?
Correct.
Per, per one or pack?
We would need to verify that dollar amount, but I believe that was.
We're getting into contraband. Cuban cigars are usually at that level. Okay, so there's a, there's a price tag out there. How about chewing tobacco? Are we gonna throw this in? No one has said it has to be smoked. They're talking about tobacco products.
I believe chewing tobacco was excluded from the state law as loose leaf tobacco, along with premium cigars and hookah. Mr. Najari, I think you're asking the right questions of your colleagues. We can give you some information as to who else does what. I don't know that everybody is going to be consistent across the board. And so if you want to have something in place of the state, tell us what it is that you prefer, or just as Mr. Kasakian had suggested, just do what the state law was going to do.
Yeah, well, you know, the state messed us up. We were ready to take action on it in October of 2019. Then we heard the state's coming in, so we backed off, and then, and all this other stuff happened. I mean, I think, I think we have agreement on several of the larger identifiable tobacco products. Menthol cigarettes, all the e-electronic stuff. We're saving hookahs in one way or another, whether it's gonna be preserved by location or by some other manner. I'm not sure we've got a huge chewing tobacco problem. Obviously, it's a dangerous product. In some ways, more dangerous than smoked tobacco. And I would consider that if we want to go the chewing tobacco route. And there's, you know, there's like wintergreen, I don't know, the little pouches, and you just, it's not so much the raw leaf anymore. It's those little packets. I forgot the name for that stuff. But wintergreen would be a flavored tobacco that you would, you don't chew it, you just put it in your.
Okay, one second. Mr. Garcia wants to clear all those problems. If we let him speak for a few minutes. Mr. Garcia, City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure I'm gonna clear all the problems, but two suggestions. One, if council's done with questions, I know there are a number of callers, so it would be wise to take the callers before further discussion on the actual ordinance. And just to reiterate the point that, you know, at the end of the day, if you're gonna, if the council's gonna provide direction to staff, it's probably clear just to provide us direction on what you want in the ordinance, or what you want excluded versus saying follow the state or follow the county, because then we, you know, we just, we want to be clear on your intent when it gets down to it. So if you wanted to include all flavored tobacco, but exclude hookah or premium cigars, just as an example, then just make that the direction so that we can bring back what's in line with where you want to be.
We will go to callers, but I just want to, one item has been raised here that worries me, that what the price of a cigar gonna be, who has to follow to see what it is? Who will enforce it? I mean, this is gonna be too hard to formulate and follow. I mean, the police should ask what the price of this cigar is to, I mean, I don't know.
I think that was the issue, that you have to have some way to define the term premium, and that's one way to do it.
All right.
It's simpler than some of the other ways.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Let's go to the callers.
Mayor, currently I have 12 lines.
Okay, two minutes each.
How many minutes, two?
Two minutes.
Okay, he stopped.
Casey Nagel, you're live. Casey?
Hi, my name is Dr. Casey Nagel, and I'm a preventive medicine specialist and I'm a member of the American Academy of Pediatrics, California, Chapter Two. So I do applaud the city's desire to reduce access to e-cigarette products through this sales ban, but it's simply not enough when the youth and communities are being targeted constantly by the tobacco and cigarette industry. Therefore, I'd like to encourage you to amend this ordinance to reflect a comprehensive ban on the sale of flavored tobacco products, which would include traditional combustible cigarettes, e-cigarettes, and cigars, as well as chewing tobacco. Given the referendum discussed before, the law to end the sale of flavored tobacco products would not take effect until November 2022. And every day of delay before this law takes effect means more money in the industry's pocket and more California youth getting addicted. Our community deserves a fully comprehensive ordinance ending the sale of candy and sweet flavored tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes. Furthermore, the tobacco industry aggressively advertises menthol tobacco and flavored e-cigarette products to teens and communities of color. The youth tobacco and vaping epidemic is a serious public health threat. We know nearly 90% of smokers first try a tobacco product by age 18. But if people don't start using tobacco by age 26, they are likely never to start. So our focus must be on prevention at this critical stage of life. The 2018 National Youth Tobacco Survey showed an alarming surge in e-cigarette use. Vaping is now the most popular way for adolescents to use tobacco. From 2017 to 2018, usage rose by 78% for high school students and 48% for middle school students. If you want to stay alive, it's time to do the right thing, end the sale of flavored tobacco products once and for all. Please prioritize the health of your residents over profit. Thank you for your time, council.
Thank you. Thank you for the information, by the way. Next caller, please.
Next caller, Dr. Michael Madden. Dr. Michael Madden, you're live.
Yes.
Go ahead.
You can hear me, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I'm Dr. Michael Madden. I am a family physician with 39 years of experience in primary care and a particular focus on public health and preventive care initiatives. Any public health issue requires a balance of competing demand. We know that flavored e-cigarettes and other similar products can be an important reason why adults who currently smoke combustible cigarettes are willing to make that trade-off from combustibles to a vapor product or another electronic delivery system, which by all accounts is infinitely safer than combustible tobacco. Has the city quantified how many fewer adult smokers would make this switch away from combustible cigarettes, the most dangerous product, or how many adult users of flavored vapor products may return to cigarette smoking if you ban the sale of flavored vapor products?
Hello?
It's really in the form of a question. It is my understanding we should ask questions rather than give statements. But I think that you do need to seriously consider that adults need these products to move from combustible cigarettes to a much safer vapor product. And I perfectly understand the youth access issue, which is currently being addressed with the 21 law. And I would also encourage you to aggressively enforce the age 21 law for sale. But don't take away an important tool, just like methadone for opioid addicts or seatbelts and helmets to prevent motor vehicle accidents, to get smokers to move to a safer product. It's youth versus helping adults as well.
Okay. Thank you. Next caller, please. Thank you, doctor.
Myra Batista. Myra, you're live.
Thank you. Hi, thank you very much, city council members for listening to what I have to say. I would like to give examples of cities that have adapted the tobacco ban. It only makes adult customers travel. It's not really taking care of the problem or what you're saying. Adults should have the right. And I think what the city council right now is not thinking about is that the youth is getting it online. They're not getting it from the 7-Eleven, from the 21 and over POS systems, that they have to swipe an ID. And what you're really doing is hurting small business during an epidemic. Some of the 7-Elevens have lost over 40% revenue and lost a lot of economic growth and have lost employees due to the fact that this is a right, a 21 and over right. This is a business, and this is something that everyone is doing legally with licensing. And you are right now hurting the business, and you're hurting 21 and over rights. So what I say is please consider what the state, what the voters did. Over a million people voted that let us decide. 21 and over people should be able to decide if they're not gonna want to do something. This is like, pretty soon, we're gonna ban wine, we're gonna ban alcohol. I mean, this is not something that I think the council right now should be deciding just on one meeting. I think it should be addressed in committees, and I think there's a lot of confusion on what are the options. And you can't just take away a right, like the state tried to do, when there's voters that are out there saying, listen to us. So I consider, I would consider the city council to think about it and maybe have another meeting and talk to the retailers and talk to the schools and find out what the problem is and how we can all work together as realtors, as retailers, and as business people, and to do the right thing for the youth. We all agree that we want to protect the youth, but think about the businesses.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Mike Robihod. Mike, you're live.
Hi there, my name is Mike. I'm 35 years old and I'm not a tobacco user. This last past year, for a couple of months, I was given the opportunity to get signatures for 793, which was the ban to, or which was to delay the California flavor ban. Because of this opportunity, I talked to thousands of people about this issue in Glendale and other cities. The main consensus was that we should wait for voters to decide. But I don't want to talk about all the voters right now. I want to specify the younger generation and what they said. Almost every response I got when I asked, hey, they're gonna ban flavored tobacco, they said, I don't care about the ban. I will get it either way. And I heard this hundreds of times. They're gonna get it from different cities. They're gonna go across city lines to buy all the products, which is gonna hurt revenue in your county and city. They're gonna get it out of state. They're gonna get it online, which they already are, and it's not gonna be regulated. And the scariest thing that I did hear is that they're gonna get it from friends or dealers on the street. This would make a huge black market for these products. And a lot of the stores that I went to already had people in front of the store selling illegal drugs. So now you're gonna have young people who are gonna go to the dealers, who are gonna get unregulated questionable product, and now they're gonna have access to other harmful drugs. I understand what we're going for here, but it is not the solution. I know in many past cases that dealers have also added stronger drugs to products to hook their clientele. So what's to say they're not gonna do the same now for tobacco and flavored tobacco? We don't want our kids to have more access to these products. I really think we should wait for the state, let us decide, let the voters decide like they did to pause this ban and give ourselves more time to properly figure out what the solution to this product is, this problem is.
Thank you very much. Generally, I don't cut anybody, but today we have 12 calls, so Mike.
That's okay. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for calling. Mr. Garcia, the caller raised an important issue. Okay, let's say we ban cigarette completely. So what happens that through the internet, they will buy it? Is there any law, I mean, if we pass some ordinance here, how you want to control the selling through internet?
Something we'd have to look at, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, you know, the ordinance as proposed, or how they're generally written, is to ban the sale in our jurisdiction. There might be, that might be one way for people to purchase them. But, you know, obviously, the other side of that is, even if that's true, if you believe in banning this type of activity, then it's, obviously, you have that regulatory control, and you send that message that you're not allowing this, this type of activity to occur at brick and mortar locations in Glendale.
So you have to write a letter to the selling company saying if you get order from City of Glendale, you should not send it?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that.
So but then how this gonna work? I mean, we will pass rules they can't find in a store. So obviously, now they're gonna order it through online, then what will happen? What's the purpose of this?
Well, I'll tell you, for one, I mean, even though those are avenues available to the most widely used or method for people to purchase, they are at brick and mortar stores, I gotta imagine. And that's why there was the push to ban the sale within local communities and within the state. Anyway, it's a policy call for the council. I mean, that's all it is.
Thank you. Thank you for the information. Next caller, please.
Lily Davitian. Lily, you're live.
Hi, do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Lily Davitian. I'm a project coordinator at WISALUD, which is a nonprofit in San Fernando Valley that is contracted through the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health to educate the communities of Glendale and Burbank on the harms of vaping and flavored tobacco use amongst youth. So prior to COVID-19, my colleagues and I conducted public opinion surveys and young adult purchase surveys in 2019 to gauge the community stance on the use of e-cigarettes and overall flavored tobacco products. So I'm going to briefly share data collected from these surveys. So the public opinion survey was collected at various locations throughout the Glendale community from any resident who was 18 or older. From our findings, we found that three in five residents of the 536 that we surveyed support a law that prohibits the sale of flavored tobacco products. 79% of residents believe it is easy for youth to buy tobacco products in their community, and 82% support a law regulating electronic smoking devices, including the sale of e-cigarettes and other vaping devices. In addition, we conducted a young adult purchase survey in which we had a youth resident in the city, under the age of 21, volunteer to perform a sting operation to see if merchants in the city were willing to sell tobacco products to her. In order to ensure the youth's safety, we entered undercover into the retail stores with her and observed the youth as she asked merchants if she could purchase e-cigarettes and other flavored tobacco products. The youth, of course, did not purchase any products, and if merchants were willing to sell to her, she stated that she left her wallet in the car and that we would exit the location at that point. So findings from our data show that out of the 80 stores that we conducted this sting operation in, 24% of Glendale tobacco retailers were willing to sell flavored tobacco products to young adults. And to put this in perspective, one in four stores that we surveyed were willing to sell tobacco products to a minor. Lastly, there were also merchants who refused to sell to the minor, but they told her to come back to the store accompanied with an adult, and then they would proceed to sell the product to her. And this is not reflected in this data. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Primo Castro. Primo, you're live.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Primo Castro, Government Relations Director with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, advocating for public policies that educate death, that reduce death and suffering from cancer, which includes policies targeted at reducing tobacco use. We oppose this curbing draft ordinance as it is presented before you tonight. This ordinance must go beyond prohibiting electronic smoking devices. It must include all tobacco products, and that council amended this draft ordinance to include menthol cigarettes and all other flavored tobacco products, including but not limited to premium cigars, cigarrillos, pipe tobacco, snuff, snuff, smokeless tobacco, loose leaf tobacco, shisha, flavored shisha, and electronic smoking device. Include a flavors of tobacco products, including menthol mint and wintergreen. We urge the council to oppose any provisions that exclude any tobacco products such as menthol cigarettes, cigars, or hookah. Exclude any type of licensed tobacco retailer, and also repeal the ordinance when SB 793 goes into effect. Flavors are a marketing weapon used by big tobacco manufacturers to target youth and young people to a lifetime of addiction. We all know what it does to the body. We all know that it causes cancer and other, you know, other tobacco-related diseases. Part of the reason why California spends so much every year altering tobacco product ingredients and design like adding flavors can improve the ease of use of a product by masking harsh effects, facilitating nicotine uptake, and increasing a product's overall appeal. For water pipe or hookah use, more than 31% of current middle and high school users used a flavored product in 2019. What's troubling is that the flavor infused water pipe tobacco, the sweet aromas and use of water make users misperceive this. tobacco, the sweet aromas and use of water, make users misperceive this practice as safer than cigarette smoking. In fact,
Mr. Castro.
Yeah.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Mayor, at this time, I have all the lines lit up again.
Okay, let's listen to it.
Anna Bojalian.
Oh, Julianne, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. So I'm actually the youth mentioned previously who went undercover and pretended to buy the cigarettes. And I just want to say that there was an alarming amount of merchants who were willing to sell and even encouraged me to come back with an older sibling or a friend to purchase the product. And I noticed that a lot of my peers, my classmates, they vape and they don't realize that they did it in harmful effect. And I think that because of that, it's important that we put in a comprehensive flavor ban to ensure the safety and health of the kids, you know, because a lot of them do vape, and whether they get it illegally or illegally, they're still doing it. And I think that we need to get to the root of the issue to really solve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Lori Bremner. Lori, you're live. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Lori Bremner. I'm with PAVE, which is Parents Against Vaping eCigarettes. PAVE is founded, run, and powered by volunteers. And while I am their California grassroots coordinator, I also speak to you tonight from my heart as a parent and a cancer survivor, and a daughter who lost her dad to tobacco-related illness before I could make him a grandpa. PAVE appreciates that the Glendale City Council is looking to address the youth tobacco issue. Flavored tobacco is now, in the time of COVID, more than ever, a deadly hook. And if this proposal tonight were to be amended, to prohibit the sale of all flavored tobacco products, not just e-cigarettes, we would enthusiastically support the ordinance. But Glendale kids deserve the same comprehensive protections enjoyed by more than 40 other municipalities in the state of California, including unincorporated LA County, Santa Clarita, El Monte, and many, many other nearby towns. And before you consider an exemption for hookah, I encourage you to look at the flavor menus of the hookah lounges in Glendale. The flavors include White Gummy Bear, Fuzzy Naval, and Foreplay. I suspect those flavors do not honor the cultural tradition of hookah. They are offered to attract youth. Chewing tobacco, snus, and all the various forms of flavored pouches, powders, toothpicks, all the emerging products that contain nicotine and flavors are attractive to kids and should be included in the Glendale ordinance. And a prior state law made it virtually impossible for kids to buy tobacco products online. Now tobacco online orders are handled like alcohol with age verification required at delivery and signature of an adult. The youth of Glendale simply cannot wait for the state or the federal government to take action to protect them. How many kids will get hooked before November 2022 when the voters decide? Parents are counting on you, their local elected officials, to step in and halt the epidemic of youth tobacco use. SB-793 is a floor, not a ceiling. Keep it simple. Thank you. Be bold in your actions today.
Thank you very much. Next caller.
Miriam Zazoomnis. Miriam?
Hi, yes. Miriam Zazoomnis here. Hi. Thank you, council members. My name is Miriam. I'm calling on behalf of the Arab American Groceries Association and the Neighborhood Business Alliance. We are two California trade associations based in the retail convenience and ethnic import store sector. These are essential businesses that you will be banning products that bring in our regular customers. I'd really like you to consider the economic impact. And of course, I would love to see real data. Unauthorized sting operations by nonprofits are not FDA compliance checks. They're not Department of Public Health statistics for compliance ratings. In San Francisco, we had 35% of our tobacco license retailers that were lost after the ban, while businesses on the outskirts of the city especially plummeted due to access in neighboring counties. I would also really like to note that speaking to the authenticity of our cultural traditions, while effectively sanctioning our businesses and our livelihood, is particularly xenophobic and disrespectful to the working people and the immigrant population that owns the majority of the retailers in which you are trying to sanction while allowing no data for how you will restrict online sales in your region. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Miriam. Next caller, please.
Yannick Ayrapetian. Yannick, you're live.
Hi. My name is Yannick Ayrapetian. I'm a registered nerd. I've been a nerd for 20 years. And I'm calling in support of the flavored e-cigarette ban. I like to urge the council to consider a comprehensive flavor ban. I'm part of Armenian community, and I have seen firsthand how hookah and vape cause addiction in many families. And because of this COVID infection, even families 21 years old are losing their lives. I want to mention that I don't consider hookah part of my culture. There is a misunderstanding. I know many people in my community that are again smoking hookah because it is dangerous. It is harmful as smoking cigarettes. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Ayrapetian. Next caller, please.
Barbara Cordova, you're live. Barbara?
Yes, hi. I'm Barbara Cordova, and I do support the full ban on flavored tobacco in Glendale. And I don't agree that because people will go get it elsewhere that it shouldn't be banned. It should be banned. They need to be educated on the harm of it. That underlies everything, the youth. So basically, I know that the association between the first use of flavored tobacco and current tobacco use poses a public health risk. And it's for both youth and adults. I've cited flavors as a major reason for e-cigarette use, as well as for use of hookah, cigarettes, menthol cigarettes, and smoking tobacco. And 81% of youth and 86% of adults who ever used tobacco, even once or twice in their lives, reported the first tobacco product they used was flavored. We all know the tobacco industry has been an industry that for decades sought to hide the true effects of their product. These same products continue to cause disease and death in the U.S. and around the world. And flavored tobacco is their way of marketing to young and hooking new users. So those are my reasons. I think that there should be a ban on the flavored tobacco product.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Brenda Villanueva. Brenda, you're live. Brenda, can you hear me? Go ahead.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, awesome. My name is Brenda Villanueva, and I am representing United Communities for Equitable Health Policies. I want to call in support of the flavored ban on e-cigarettes, but I urge you to consider a comprehensive ban on all flavored tobacco products, which include menthol, flavored cigarets, hookah, e-cigarettes. And although SB-793 is postponed to 2022 ballot, Glendale can still consider doing the ban before the industry takes further advantage of our youth. I would really like you guys to choose building up communities over profit. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Next caller, please.
Vanessa Gomboa. Vanessa, you're live. Go ahead.
Hello. Thank you for this time to speak. During today's city council meeting, I've heard lots of concern and confusion about what LA County says, the state, Burbank, and all these exceptions. And I really think that the best decision to make is to wait for SB-793. So much time and resources have already been put into that. And I think that it's really important that we listen to the voters' voice. And instead, Glendale should use their time and resources instead of making their own, but to invest that in education. You know, if we want to stop youth from smoking, we need to start there. Did you know that 90% of teen pregnancies resulted from no formal education of sex, whether that was at school or a conversation with their parents? This is where we need to start. We need to communicate with our youth. We can't just take away abstinence, banning, the prohibition. These things don't work, and history has shown that. Instead, we're taking away a right for law-abiding adults, 21-year-olds. If anything, like it's been mentioned today, kids are going to get it online. There is no question. Kids are doing their schooling online. They're more tech savvy than ever. This is where they're comfortable. If anything, storefronts are the best defense. I'm 25, and I still get nervous handing over my ID when I want to buy alcohol because I'm five foot and I look really young. These stores, there are so many business owners that have put their whole livelihood into creating businesses, their money, and they want to see their businesses thrive. And they don't want to make these mistakes that can close down their business by selling to minors. And a lot of them, they can't even make that mistake because they have POS systems that require an ID swipe. Now, this is the best place. This is where I trust all of the tobacco sales, like other people have mentioned, too. If kids want to get this, any type of tobacco, and they're forced to go to drug dealers, I mean, if parents are telling their kids not to smoke, and these kids are rebelling anyway, then you can only imagine how worse it's going to get. And I do want to make one more point, that I know that you want to have a clear conscience for these kids, but instead, you're going to have the bloodshed of hundreds of businesses closing down. Not only will this close down, I just want to say one thing. Not only will this close down businesses, but there will be empty storefronts, and those landlords are going to have no tenants.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you.
Kenny Lund. Kenny, you're live.
Hi. Thank you very much for hearing me today. I just wanted to talk about the tobacco ban, and I think it's actually a fantastic idea, mainly because I used to smoke cigarettes myself. The way that I started was me and my friends, you know, we used to hang out, and one guy brought over tobacco one day. None of us really wanted to smoke it, but it turned out that it was flavored, and so that seemed less bad to us. And we actually all started smoking then. Since then, I'd had several family members die from tobacco use, whether it was cancer or their lungs not working properly anymore. And so the thing about it is the flavored tobacco leads to use of normal tobacco, and that's a huge problem, especially in youth. I mean, you've heard several people talk about it tonight, but I've had firsthand experience with it. I was lucky enough to stop doing it when I did, but I don't want to see that happen for the rest of the people. So I think the ban is a fantastic idea. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you, Kenny. Next caller, please.
Jamie Rojas. Jamie?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jaime Rojas with the National Association of Tobacco Outlets. Mr. Mayor and council members, the one thing that you haven't heard from big anti-tobacco is that cities and counties like LA County, Burbank, Beverly Hills, San Francisco, San Leandro, El Monte, et cetera, et cetera, the ban does not work. The numbers before, after the flavor bans have passed have not decreased at all if they stayed the same or increased. So public policy does matter here. The right public policy matters. We've seen time and time again where businesses are closed with bad policies. They don't give you the numbers because they know that the numbers show that flavor bans do not work. In addition to that, why isn't flavored combustible marijuana not included in this? It starts with e-cigarettes and vaping, and all of a sudden, you have all types of tobacco products being included here because they're giving misinformation. In addition to that, we rely on facts. Facts from the FDA on sting operations year after year. In Glendale, there's a 95% success rate from the FDA in the state of California in the past three years. We don't do fake surveys that are not open to public testimony. We don't use and pay nonprofit organizations to testify. That half a billion dollars that's picked up annually in the state of California should be used for education and code enforcement for municipalities like Glendale. Please bring and put this to a stop. Bring in your local retailers to discuss options and opportunities. Say no to this and wait for SB-793 for the voters to look at this and vote on it correctly. Flavor bans do not work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rojas. Next caller, please.
Silver Pelao. Silver?
Yes, good evening. My name is Silvairio Pelao. I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator with Pueblo Salud. I just want to thank the council for giving the time to speak. I wanted to point out a few things. One, Pueblo Salud is a contracted agency with the LA County Department of Public Health. Secondly, it's important to note that none of the e-cigarette manufacturers have received designation as a cessation tool. And then also, thirdly, as far as hookah, it's important to note that hookah use is harmful. One hookah smoking session can equal up to smoking 100 cigarettes or five cigarette packs. Hookah users are exposed to many of the same toxic chemicals as cigarette users, but at dramatically higher levels. Hookah smoke contains nicotine, tar, and carcinogens produced from the burning of the flavoring added to tobacco, as well as carbon monoxide from coal used in hookah. In 2005, the World Health Organization issued an advisory note about hookah use, stating that people who smoke hookah pipes or who are exposed to secondhand hookah smoke are at risk for the same diseases that are caused by smoking cigarettes, including cancer, heart disease, respiratory disease, adverse effects during pregnancy. This advisory note also warned that sharing a water pipe mouthpiece poses a serious risk of transmission of communicable diseases, including tuberculosis and hepatitis. In the U.S., nearly 80% of youth hookah users reported using hookah because it came in flavors they like. Youth and young adults wrongly believe hookah is safer and less addictive than cigarettes. The hookah industry markets and advertises directly to youth and young adults. Hookah promotions are common on Instagram, and the messaging is overwhelmingly positive with little mention of health risks. The Hispanic Latino population makes up the largest proportion of young adult hookah users, which suggests that hookah use is not limited to a cultural and social practice among Middle Easterners, Indians, Armenians, or Persians, but rather that hookah use has become commercialized. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next caller.
Edward Sanders, you're live. Edward?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I first want to commend you for your willingness to address the flavored tobacco issue. Ending the sale of flavored tobacco really is a critical community health imperative. I'd like to take a moment just to call your attention to some of the misdirection tactics that I think are being employed by the tobacco industry. I think you heard earlier from a doctor that offered up that somehow vaping is a healthier option than smoking. I want to point out that e-cigarette pods have enough nicotine that they equal 20 cigarettes. That amount of nicotine is addictive. It's an addictive product, and that product is being targeted at children and young adults. And they're using flavored candy to do that. You were also subjected to a number of different scare tactics, like a black market. You're going to hear from drug dealers, closed down businesses, and teen pregnancies. These are all sort of fantastic things used to sort of scare the public, which is what they want to do. Ultimately, they would love to have this on a ballot where they could spend hundreds of millions of dollars to scare people into their decision. Ultimately, what you're doing is siding with what health professionals, health organizations, community groups, parents are all suggesting that you do. The House of Representatives have already voted to end flavored tobacco. The state legislature in the state of California voted to end flavored tobacco. The governor signed it. Every jurisdiction that looks at this is moving positively to end the sale of flavored tobacco. And I want to commend you, and I hope that you will see those misdirection tactics by the industry for what they are.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Next caller.
Yaneth Rodriguez?
Hi, this is Yaneth. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everybody. My name is Yaneth Rodriguez, and I work with the University of Southern California Institute of Prevention Research at the Tech School of Medicine. And I wanted to share some research findings from our Tobacco Center of Regulatory Sciences. I did actually send an information sheet earlier today via email to the mayor, as well as the rest of the city council members, with a lot of this research information that includes citations that have been peer-reviewed. But I did want to highlight a few things that I mentioned, or just some research findings. From our studies of examining trends in tobacco use over time, it has been shown that youth with no history of e-cigarette use or no history of cigarette use actually started using because of flavored tobacco products. When we asked students or youth about the flavors, and we asked if we took these flavored tobacco products away, would they still use the products? And they said they would not use the products if the flavored tobacco products And they said they would not use the products, um, if the flavored, uh, tobacco products were not available. Um, I also wanted to share, uh, a main research point, um, that I wanted to highlight was that a strong comprehensive ordinance to regulate e-cigarette flavored and menthol tobacco products has a tremendous potential to substantially reduce youth use of tobacco products, including e-cigarettes. Um, we actually conducted a research study here in Southern California and showed that a strong tobacco retail license and enforcement preventing sales to minors was associated with lower rates of youth and adult initiation of combustible and e-cigarette use. And when I say a com- a comprehensive ban on the sale of flavored tobacco products, I mean, including traditional combustible, uh, cigarettes, cigars, as well as chewing tobacco and flavored hookah, uh, products. I also wanted to mention, um, as it has already been mentioned, that, um, e-cigarettes...
Ms. Rodriguez, your time is up. We have lots of callers. I'm sorry to stop you. Maybe next time.
No problem.
Thank you.
Paul Sekon, Paul, you're live.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, guys. Uh, thank you for your time. Uh, I would like to think that we're here to build bridges, not walls. Uh, let's bring retailers to the table and come up with a really good policy. Uh, to the caller that mentioned people are going out of business, BS. You called my aunt in the Bay Area, San Leandro, uh, she's still paying the lease for a business that she closed down. Uh, there's no data, zero data, if you noticed, and they never brought you any data within the last five years. Why? You have to ask yourself, why? Because it hasn't worked. It hasn't worked. Bottom line. Uh, just in regards to convenience stores, I don't know if you know this or not, but if we sell to a minor in our cot, we have two violations. We have to sell our store. That's not a joke. So to whoever said that they did, uh, uh, thing, I call BS because there's no way, we have to go through so many checkpoints just to get through it. Next thing is, would you guys, how would you guys feel if I said, hey, we're going to take away your 25% of your 401K? Because these people won't be able to sell their business for what price they had bought it for. So are you guys going to give them the money that they're going to lose when they, you know, when they want to retire? What about the sales law? And it's not all about money. But the funny thing is, is that if you have 95% and it's working and no one, no one's really selling to minors, why are you even addressing this? I think you have like a lot of other issues that are probably a bit more important than tobacco. And where's the $400 million annually received? If these people from anti tobacco really cared, how come they haven't been sending in your county before? Why did they show up to you this couple of months? Like, you have to ask yourself some questions. And I'm pretty sure once you guys do that, you'll come with the right answers. Uh, at the end of the day, just remember, these people, they have kids too. So why is it that their kids, you know, are waiting till the proper age to smoke?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Paul.
Ron Bahomi, Ron, you're live.
Yeah, how's it going?
You're live, go ahead, Ron.
This is Ron. Am I live?
Yes, go ahead, Ron.
Oh, yeah. I am actually, um, for the ban of flavored electric smoking cigarettes. Um, you know, I'm sure you've read all the research, why it's bad for the lungs and et cetera. But, you know, I know like from research, it shows that what this really does, it leads to other smoking behaviors. You know, it starts in e-cig, then it'll go to, you know, marijuana or cigarettes or other drugs. It's more of a gateway drug to me that just to start here and that's the way I see it. And about, couple, a couple of the points people made about, oh, it's going to reduce sales to their stores and et cetera. You know, there, they're always, the companies are always finding new product to sell. So if this gets banned, there'll be something else they're going to bring out to market to the youth. Because cigarettes, well, they weren't as attractive to the youth and they got e-cigarettes now. So it's going to be always something new they're going to find. But I think I'm for this ban because the flavored cigarettes, I think is just a terrible thing for even the youth to start because it's just a gateway. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jimmy, how many more calls we have?
One more.
Okay, let's go to the last one.
We've had 21 callers. Vahan Kazanian, you're live. Vahan? Vahan? Vahan Kazanian?
Mr. Kazanian? I guess.
That was the last caller.
He got tired. Okay. Uh, Mr. Golania.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Agajanian, and we're City Council. If it's your pleasure, I'd like to, um, ask Bradley Calvert again, since there were questions regarding this, the details of the state ban, that he can, um, provide an overview to go to, uh, cover what those details entail for clarity and consistency and to respond to some of the question regarding online sales, possession, uh, premium cigars, et cetera, if you don't mind.
I'm glad that we gave, uh, Mr. Calvert some time to look into it. Thank you, Mr. Calvert.
Thank you, Mr. Golanian, thank you, Mayor. Um, just to offer hopefully what is a little bit of clarification here is you, you try to formulate a decision process and what you would like to do. Uh, so what the state did is they banned all products that were flavored and that included menthol. Um, that includes cigarettes, uh, cigarillos, uh, electronic vaping products, um, things of that nature. Now, all loose leaf, uh, per the question that I believe was posed by Councilmember Najarian earlier, um, anything couch related, uh, chewing tobacco, those things were not part of the ban. Um, premium cigars, flavored premium cigars are allowed. I believe earlier I had said $25. It's actually $12. I misspoke in there. Um, so it's, it's, it's legal to possess these items, but it would not be legal under this law to sell them within the state of California or if council were to move in this direction to sell them within the city limits of the city of Glendale. Um, I, I know the question then was, was posed a little bit earlier by the mayor regarding online sales. Um, this did not include online sales from, from the state legislation. I, I would also say that it would be very challenging a, at best for us as a local jurisdiction to be able to put something like that in place for online sales. Um, this is very similar to how alcohol products can, can or cannot be shipped and sold, uh, between state lines. Um, that's usually controlled at a very minimum at a county level and then state level, not at a jurisdiction level, just because it proves to be just a, a little bit too challenging. Um, so e- even at the state level, they did not include online sales. Um, we have not seen local jurisdictions include online sales as well. Um, to Councilmember Brotman's comment regarding Burbank, um, did look into the state, they do allow hookah within defined establishments. Uh, you must be 21 years and all, 21 years and old and up to be able to go to those. And they do still allow the sale of loose, essentially loose leaf hookah to be made, um, by, by licensed, uh, vendors for tobacco. Um, so that's kind of the, the parameters around the use of hookah, the restrictions on hookah. Um, it does still ban electronic hookah though, uh, only traditional hookah is allowed. Hopefully that brings a little bit of clarification, but I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. Is there any... Yes, Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, I was also, um, looking at the letter we got from L.A. County Department of Public Health and just to clarify, they've, uh, their ban is comprehensive, so they don't make any carve out for hookah tobacco or, um, or I believe for, uh, loose tobacco. It's just, it's a comprehensive flavored tobacco ban. So I think those are, um, those are two models and personally I would, I would be happy with either one. Um, I would, uh, probably, you know, propose the, the LA County, uh, ban. It's comprehensive and, and simple. Um, but if there's a strong interest in preserving, uh, the ability for certain establishments to provide an experience of hookah smoking in their lounge, uh, I think that that would not be the end of the world.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Comments? No comments? So we can go. Is there any, anything Mr. Garcia wants to add?
No, no, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Golanian, is there anything else you want to add?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, maybe roll call, please.
What? No, I don't think, yeah, I think we need direction on which, which option the council...
I think...
The council wants and then, and then there'll be a motion on that and we'll bring back an ordinance at a later date.
I think there was initially an interest to, and I believe, uh, Councilmember Devine and I both expressed a desire for alternative to, to establish within our city, um, the same rules that the state, the same laws that the state passed, um, as it was with the carve out for hookah, um, banning all flavored other tobacco. Um, so that would be my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so you're going to bring it back. I don't have to call the roll call.
Well, we'd like, we'd like a motion on that. So the motion was made, it was seconded. I don't know if any other council members have any comments, but if, if not, then you can go to a vote on the motion and we'll bring it back.
Okay. Mr. Brotman.
So, so basically what this would mean is it would, the ban would include menthol, it would carve out hookah, it would carve out premium cigars. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
I mean, that's fine. That's fine.
It's, it's Mr. Kazakin's motion, so that's what he was asking him.
Okay.
I would support that.
So roll call, please then.
Councilmember Brotman?
Is it, isn't this a, are, are we introducing an ordinance?
No, because the ordinance, that language has not been drafted. I mean, so we would need, this is a motion to direct us to bring back an ordinance.
Got it, got it. So I'm a yes.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Kazakin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Okay, thank you. What's next, please?
Next item is Public Works Regarding Contract Extension for Parking Citation Processing, Delinquent Collection, and Preferential Parking Permit Services. One, Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Authorizing the Interim City Manager or is Designated to Execute an Amendment to the Contract, C105754A, with Duncan Solutions for Parking Citation Processing, Delinquent Collections, and Preferential Parking Permit Program Services, extending the duration for one year and increasing the amount by $187,500.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Go- Mr. Golanian, please.
Thank you, Mayor Agajanian, and Member of City Council. In the interest of time, I will just add that staff is recommending to extend this contract with Duncan Solutions, uh, for one year at the existing prices, uh, to allow uninterrupted operation and service and give staff sufficient time to prepare and issue an RFP for a post pandemic parking enforcement. Uh, if you'd like, I can have, uh, staff provide a presentation, uh, otherwise that's the recommendation.
I'll move the item.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Kazakin.
Uh, um, before we vote on this and before there, while my colleagues, uh, seconds it, I, I do want to ask staff regarding, um, parking, um, violation enforcement, um, or enforcement of our parking guidelines. I, it has come to my attention that some cities do not, uh, enforce on days when there is no street sweeping because street sweeping has been moved to every other week. And I believe in Glendale that is the case as well. The ticketing is not occurring weekly either. And I think that in, in, uh, the spirit of fairness, if we're not sweeping those streets, we shouldn't be ticketing people either. And there is signage in other cities that outlines when the sweeping occurs, just as we have it now. And I would like to see if that's something that, uh, any of my colleagues would like to second and bring back. So we're not ticketing folks when we're not sweeping as we have signed or said that we will.
I would like to, uh, second it, but is there any problem with it?
I'll second that.
I just want to understand, is there any problem with this suggestion? Mr. Golanian?
No, sir. We'll definitely look into it.
Okay, yeah, I will second it or Mr. Kazak- Mr. I guess Brotman wanted to do. Does it matter, one of us?
So...
There's a, there's a motion, uh, to move the item.
Original motion, I'll move.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kazakin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Okay, but maybe before I say yes or no, do, are we going to do that? That some days we won't sweep the street, some we do? Or that's not, in our case, that's not going to work?
Mr. Mayor, we're going to look into it, do some research and check with other cities and bring a report back.
Okay, yes. Next item, please.
Next item is City Attorney Regarding Request Review Incident of City Board Member Drinking Alcoholic Beverage During Board Meeting, DRB. Uh, one, motion to note and file. Two, motion providing direction to staff.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, Councilmember Najarian requested this item, um, and it was seconded by you, Mr. Mayor. The, the item is, uh, related to the July 14th, 2021, excuse me, um, DRB meeting, uh, in which, um, it was noticed that DRB member Francesca Smith was drinking from what appeared to be a glass of wine, uh, during the meeting. Uh, that information, uh, was passed along to me and I passed it along obviously to the entire council. Um, a, a response was provided by Ms. Smith to Councilmember Brotman, who was her nominating council member. Um, but subsequent to that, uh, Councilmember Najarian asked for a report on this item, uh, and not really a report so much as for this item to be agendized so that the council can discuss it, uh, and its nature and, and provide further direction or just receive the report. So with that, I don't have any other thing, anything else to add, um, unless, you know, Councilmember Najarian wants to provide any additional information.
Mr. Golanian?
No, sir. I was just pointing to the screen.
Okay. Mr. Najarian?
I'd like to...
Mr. Najarian, yes.
Thank you. I'd like to bring this forward. Uh, we may have a lot of discussion, we may not have much discussion, but, um, as the city attorney said, this is an agenda item that I asked to be brought forward after I was notified by several individuals, residents, and city staff that they saw totally inappropriate behavior by Ms. Francesca Smith, sitting in her role as a member of the design review board on January 14th, 2021, during an official design review board meeting. The actions that they claim to have seen are drinking alcohol during this meeting, hearing cases, and voting on cases. I really, I really didn't want to air this publicly. I was hoping that this could be taken care of in a manner which we have previously done. That's a meeting with the city attorney, um, the city manager, and the, the board member. Uh, I'm a, I'm pretty sure this story, uh, could be picked up by the media. I think if it's picked up, it's going to make the DRB process and the whole city look bad. You know, as I, as I mentioned, I did ask the city attorney to look into the claims and speak with, uh, the appointing council member, uh, and the board member and hoping that some discreet action could be taken. Uh, but it didn't turn out that way. The council member, uh, interviewed the applicant and believed, uh, that he had heard enough and that the case was closed. But we're here today and because I feel this is something that would be irresponsible for us, uh, at least for me, to ignore. It would be wrong to sweep this under the carpet. It would be wrong to let it go. We owe transparency in government to our residents and this is part of that transparency. Now, our commissions, uh, serve as a support arm for the city council. Uh, in most cases, they are advisory. However, there are a few commissions whose role is more, much more than just advisory. Those handful of commissions have roles that are specifically set forth in the city charter and the municipal code. And the commissions and commissioners are given independent authority to make decisions on behalf of the city. One of those commissions is the design review board. These commissions, and the commissioners in particular, conduct legally required hearings, meetings. They act as a quasi judicial body. That means they act like a panel of judges. Judges who take testimony, question applicants, consultants, review evidence, and make findings a fact. And applicants for projects before the DRB spend sometimes years of their time, hire architects, engineers, designers, and other experts, and expend tens of thousands of dollars in doing so, not to mention the property purchases, which easily get into the multimillion dollars. Likewise, a... Likewise, opponents of projects, usually residents and homeowners associations, spend countless hours of their own time appearing to give testimony and to write letters to the DRB staff and to the commission. All the applicants, supporters, and opponents are at the mercy of the five members of the Design Review Board who can deny or approve a design or place conditions on a design. It's for these reasons that there has to be absolute trust in the integrity of the commission members. The process, the process must be beyond reproach. Once integrity and trust is lost, it can never be restored. Every decision made after trust and integrity is shattered and the process fouled will be suspect by all the parties appearing before the DRB, the applicants and the opponents alike. So whose job is it to maintain integrity of the DRB process? Well, that's our job. As council, we have to ensure every commissioner acts appropriately and beyond reproach and that no member has any alcohol whatsoever in their body. We have to make sure that no DRB member is seen drinking alcohol during the deliberations, whether or not they are impaired or they have a certain blood alcohol level in their bodies. I believe that there is behavior that is so far past any standard that we must condemn it. And I say drinking alcohol during a DRB meeting is one of those. Because doing so is disrespectful to the applicants who've prepared long times, long hours to be before the board. It's disrespectful to the staff, to the public, and to the city of Glendale. So, Mr. Mayors and member of council, I want to discuss this, but I don't want to discuss the issue of punishment today. I only want to discuss the issue of, of liability, of, of wrongful conduct. If we start mixing those two together, I think they should very much be separated. So I feel the issue before us is whether Francesca Smith, on January 14th of this year, while sitting during a Design Review Board meeting, acting as a, as a Design Review Board member, was drinking alcohol during the meeting while listening to evidence on designs, conferring with staff, other Design Review Board members, and architects and design professionals, and voting and imposing conditions on project before the Design Review Board. And if so, if we do believe that she was doing that, to find such conduct unacceptable. Was she doing it and was it wrong? This was a televised meeting. The tape of this meeting can be viewed on the city website. The meeting started at 5:00 PM. Commissioners were participating remotely. They were at home, per the COVID orders by the city and the county. But these meetings had been conducted remotely since March, as well as the city council meetings. The RB usually meets twice a month, and it was being quite routine working from home. In fact, every board, commission, city council meeting, housing authority meeting, has been meeting virtually since March. There's nothing new for anyone. This was nothing new for anyone on the Design Review Board. And yes, most of these meetings occur in the evening, at the end of the regular workday, perhaps at the end of a hard workday. That's mostly the way it has always been, though. Commissioners devote many hours of their time with no financial compensation and sometimes paid with only a thank you, and sometimes they don't even get a thank you. The meeting was at 5:00 PM. At three hours and nine minutes into the meeting, Ms. Smith brings an object into view and takes a drink. Later, at three hours and 32 minutes, she takes another drink, and we see what it was. A wine glass presumably with wine in it. Ms. Smith continues to drink and then toasts the commission, applicants, staff, and public with cheers. There's more that was, that was visible that wasn't on the city website, however. As in our meeting right now, I can see you, my colleagues, but I believe I'm the only one that's on the, on the televised board. So I'd like to, I have a PowerPoint, Mr. Agemian. Can you please play the first one, which is the clip from the three hours, nine minutes segment?
Would this be it? Councilmember Najarian?
I believe it is. Ms. Smith is at the bottom. It's really hard to see, but if you look closely, she's there. It should be a video, Mr. Agemian. No, that's, that's not the video, Mr. Agemian. The first one is the video.
This one here? Let's see if we can play it. There it goes.
And there's what you see, a glass. Let's go to the next clip, please, number two. And then let's go to the still pictures, which were not seen on the broadcast. That's one of them. Let's go to number four. There's another one. And is there a few others? There's Ms. Smith drinking her wine. I believe it's wine. I think we can infer that it's wine. Okay, so only after the matter was raised through the city attorney and, and Mr. Brotman, did Ms. Smith issue a letter to the council member which was distributed to all of us. Now, this is supposed to be her apology. Let me just read it. "Hi, Dan. I appreciate the conversation we had last week regarding the DRB meeting on January 14th. As you can imagine, preparing for those meetings takes quite a bit of time, and the meetings are protracted after already long workdays. In that meeting after 8:00 PM, my dear husband gave me a wine glass that, among other things, contained soda water and ice cubes. Without giving it much thought, while juggling my notes on that proposed project, the Comprehensive Design Guidelines Staff Report, and five separate exhibits, I accepted it. It did not occur to me that those actions, made reasonably late in the evening, would reflect poorly on you. For that, I apologize sincerely. I assure you that it did not impair my judgment in any way and will not happen again. You should know that I take the appointment to the board very seriously and consider it an honor to represent you. Thank you again for that conversation and the opportunity to serve our city." Now, so it looks like Ms. Smith is upset. She apologizes for making Mr. Brotman look bad. That's what she says. "It would reflect poorly on you, and for that, I apologize." So it's not really an apology that's given to the city, to the Design Review Board, or anyone else like that. Furthermore, she doesn't even admit that she had wine because she states she was given a wine glass, a wine glass that, among other things, contained soda water and ice cubes. She's not even saying, "Hey, I was drinking wine, I'm sorry." She had a wine glass that had soda water and ice cubes. You know, we shouldn't make excuses for Ms. Smith. No commissioner is entitled to drink alcohol at a DRB hearing, no matter how well-prepared she is, no matter how experienced she is, or firm she is in her application of the design standards. No one. It's not about her experience, her background, how well she addresses the designs. Now, if we argue otherwise, it's to say that you'd be saying that all well-prepared commissioners and council members should be able to drink, and no one can say that with a straight face. Drinking alcohol and voting on it is flat-out wrong. And I want us to conclude that she was drinking and it was wrong. It raises other questions, though. I think it raises a question of, do we have to now decide whether a 10% wine or a 20% wine beer or scotch and soda is acceptable? Because after all, the excuse was it only contained a little bit of wine with some soda water and ice cubes. Has she ever had a drink like that before in any other meeting? I don't know. I think it sets bad examples for the commissioners. Are we going to give the next commissioner, who is caught drinking, a free ride? Are we going to ignore it? Is my commissioner going to get a case-closed verdict from me? And by the way, I've taken one of my commissioners before council for removal. So, you know, let no one say, "Oh, I'm picking on someone else's commission." It was, it was about eight years ago when it went out. It was an infamous part of our history. We can't let any alcohol be consumed. We can't say because it hasn't impaired you, it's okay for you to drink. We're not going to have breathalyzer tests for Design Review Board members. We're not going to give field sobriety tests to see if someone's unprepared. Are we going to give the best-prepared commissioners who enforce design guidelines a pass? Because those are the letters I'm getting, ladies and gentlemen, and council members. "Well, Ms. Smith is one of the best-prepared Design Review Board members." That's not the issue. Doesn't matter how she votes, doesn't matter how well she's prepared. It is the impression that's given that someone who's acting as a judge, a panel, in a panel of judges, is sitting there having a drink. There hasn't been a clear apology for this. She flaunted it at the end with her glass. She's much better than that. She's a very well-educated woman. She should know that drinking is wrong in the meetings. But now some of you say, "Well, Mr. Najarian, council member, Aura, we don't have standards for that. We never gave her a list of do's and don'ts." Do we need standards that say when you're voting to approve a design project, that you shouldn't be drinking alcohol? Well, I looked through the rules, and guess what? We do have some rules. We do have some rules. First, Municipal Code Section 2.83.020 defines Ms. Smith as a city official. The term "official" shall include members of the city council and members of all boards and commissions. So she's a city official. She's not just some board member, not just some person who's involved with the city. But the next section talks about the policy for conduct. And it states, this is 2.83.010. It says, "The proper operation of local government requires that elected and, elected and appointed officials be independent, impartial, and responsible to the people, and that the public have confidence in the integrity of its government." It further goes on in Part B to say that "public officials are bound to observe in their official acts the highest standards of performance and to discharge faithfully the duties of their office, regardless of personal considerations, recognizing that the public interest must be their primary concern. Their conduct in both their official and private affairs should be beyond reproach." So, let me just wrap it up. I've been rambling on. I believe that Ms. Smith was drinking wine. I believe that drinking wine at a DRB meeting is absolutely wrong, and I think that we should make findings on both of those. What we do about it, let's set that for another meeting. I'm willing to work with all parties involved to discuss that with them and give them my opinion. But for right now, those are the two issues. Was she drinking alcohol? And do we, as a council, think it's wrong to drink alcohol in a DRB meeting?
Thank you.
Mayor?
We have to go to the callers before I go to anybody else. Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Two minutes, please.
Beth Marlis. Beth, you're live?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Having gained ample experience with the complexities of urban design and sequo, as the chairman of the board for the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, I have tremendous respect for Francesca's expertise, her qualifications, preparedness, professionalism, and her depth of knowledge of complex statutes and standards. As a Glendale resident, I've personally read through the numerous architectural reports and highly detailed presentations that she's researched and prepared before this very city council. It's abundantly clear that Mrs. Smith's work is exceptional and her volunteer service on the DRB is a tremendous benefit to this city. Whether the impetus behind tonight's agenda item is to create new protocols, codes of conduct, and enforcement mechanisms for Glendale's various boards and commissions, or more unfortunately, as a punitive rebuke of Mrs. Smith, it's clear that the extended public display and the disparagement of her name over a minor incident for this public policy discussion, rather than handling it as an internal review, is inappropriate at best and borderline libel, imputing her professional reputation at worst. Honestly, I believe that she's really owed, she is owed an apology for this public disparagement of her name. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Kathleen Clark, you're live. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I wish to vouch for the great character and expertise of Francesca Smith. I have found her to be profoundly knowledgeable and highly professional in her presentations, which I witnessed, consultations, and city meetings. She takes her profession seriously, her position seriously, and the citizens of Glendale are very lucky to have her. Mr. Najarian mentions the city's code of conduct, yet I very seriously doubt that that code of conduct was relayed to volunteer board members. The council should be very concerned about crossing a larger ethical line and publicly dragging Mrs. Smith through the muck. The excessive rant by the council member looks extremely like defamation of character for me, to me, and opens the city up to liability. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next caller, please.
Nelson Givorkian. Nelson, you're live.
Yes, hi. Good evening, council. My name is Nelson Givorkian. I'm an attorney for one of the applicants, Monavaz Martarosian. And this is a follow-up regarding last week, last week's request to look into the Design Review Board matter involving my client and the board member, Ms. Smith. The DRB number is PDR 2004418. To echo the sentiments of Councilmember Najarian, this is a miscarriage of justice. I, I know some of the callers mentioned that this is a minor incident. To backtrack on this, you know, on January 14th, 2020, our client's proposal was rejected to construct a new home. And clearly, an intoxicated board member during that meeting can hamper the ability to render a proper decision. Now, based on the foregoing, what we're asking here, this isn't anything personal against Ms. Smith. All we're asking, our client is asking, is the city council to please address this issue today, as you guys are. And we're requesting, at least at the very minimum, a new DRB meeting as soon as possible without delays to hear our clients' matter again. I think that's only fair. Additionally, we'd like to ask to have all fees and costs waived associated with that follow-up review with the DRB. And I believe the last DRB meeting was postponed, and the, the next one being heard is on February 25th. So we'd like to ask the council, if they may, at least at the very minimum, to approve our client to be heard again on this matter for the next DRB meeting on February 25th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Joanna Pringle, you're live. Joanna?
Hi.
Hi. Whenever I've watched the DRB meetings, including the January 14 meeting, I've been impressed how well-prepared and capable Francesca Smith is. As a city, we're lucky to have someone so qualified and experienced, and it's really concerning that she's being publicly attacked instead of praised for working to ensure high-quality design in Glendale, which benefits us all. Thank you for not wasting your time on this trivial occurrence and moving on to the numerous real problems you have to deal with.
Thank you, Joanna.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Donna Jareks, you're live. Donna?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Donna Jareks, and I'm the retired local city planner. I looked at the recording of the meeting in question. It appears that Ms. Smith might have had up to a half a glass of wine toward the end of the meeting. Quite frankly, it is not unusual for elected and volunteer city officials to have one alcoholic beverage or more before meetings. It's an open secret to city staff. Ms. Smith is a forthright and experienced design and historic professional. In 2020, she was appointed to the design review board. I looked online at some of those 2020 meetings when she was first appointed. Ms. Smith attempted to enforce the city's rules and guidelines. She gave opinions based on the rules and her experience. It was disturbing to see that she was bullied rather than guided by the chair for months and months. The recordings of the meetings show it clearly, and now this item surprisingly shows up on the agenda. Did this board member, Ms. Smith, receive training from the city or just harassment? If Glendale wishes to adopt a no-alcohol policy, then the council can easily direct all volunteer and elected officials to do so. There is no need to place one individual's name on a public agenda. This is so obviously a personal attack and an attempt at humiliation. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Next caller, please.
Robert Nixon, you're live. Robert, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Bob Nixon. I'm a resident of Glendale. First and foremost, I want to express my appreciation to Ms. Smith for her work on the design review board. Ms. Smith has an impressive background in architecture, historical preservation, and the California Environmental Quality Act. The city is lucky to have someone so knowledgeable on the DRB. As to this particular incident, while it was unfortunate, it appears to have been fully resolved. Staff reported to the city attorney, who reported to Councilman Brotman. The councilman discussed the matter with his appointee, and at this point, the matter should have been closed. But instead, we have this item on today's agenda, which is a total waste of time for the city and the public. In my view, no city rules or ordinances were violated, and out of respect for Mrs. Smith, I urge the city to drop this matter immediately. And I would also like to call out an earlier caller, a proponent of a project, who referred to an intoxicated board member. I don't think there's any evidence that anyone with regard to this discussion was intoxicated, and such exaggeration and hyperbole are inappropriate at this venue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Next caller, please.
Susan Boland, you're live. Susan?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm speaking tonight for the Crescenta Highlands Neighborhood Association, and I have to express that we are terribly disappointed in this agenda item that has been brought forward, when there are far more pressing issues to address at this time. Since her appointment to the design review board, Francesca Smith has shown exemplary judgment in reviewing proposed development projects for the city. Her knowledge and commitment to following the established design guidelines is admirable, not only weighing the elements of the projects themselves, but giving thoughtful consideration to the cumulative, sorry, effects of other projects and compatibility within the surrounding context. In rendering any decision on what I'm calling "Wingate," please consider the following. Mr. Najarian mentioned codes of conduct. The public service is the primary concern for Ms. Smith. She has shown that, proven many times. There is no established rule or code of conduct specifically for these crazy at-home meetings that we have to go through due to COVID. If Ms. Smith was subject to a civil service hearing on the matter, which she's not, there would need to be substantial proof that any alcohol consumed affected the performance of Ms. Smith in her role on the board. If such evidence was found, which I'm sure it will not, the likely punishment for such an offense would be simply counseling. The fact that this has been aired in public, in such a public way, is disgraceful, and I think we should move on.
Thank you.
I have personally attended upwards of 10 Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council dinners where Glendale mayors were present, serving in an official capacity and installing new board members, and many of them consume alcohol during these occasions because the dinners were, frankly, a social gathering. There has never been similar reprimand for the mayor's indiscretions because that would be absolutely ridiculous.
Thank you, Susan.
And so is this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next caller.
Joanne Wilson, you're live. Joanne?
Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, I do understand that Francesca Smith has inadvertently broken an unwritten rule by sipping at a wine spritzer given to her by her husband during a public meeting. Well, she immediately apologized in writing and said it will never happen again. I've known Ms. Smith for many years and worked with her on a number of projects, and I cannot imagine a more knowledgeable, conscientious, or hard-working colleague than Ms. Smith. Her work for our city is absolutely invaluable, and I do hope that this event, which another caller called "Wingate," and I have written down, let's call it "Winglass Gate," let's hope this can be reclassified as the tempest in a teapot that it is, and I hope that this evening's meeting will be the very last that we hear of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Thank you. Next caller.
Andy Allison, you're live. Andy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm here to fully support Board Member Smith and to applaud the expertise and professionalism that she brings to her position as a DRB member. She brings a wealth of experience in the review of designs for new and historic building projects, based on her more than 35 years of experience as an architectural historian, having previously worked in similar reviews roles, both in Los Angeles and Pasadena. I commend Board Member Smith for devoting the time and energy to understanding projects prior to the public review of DRB, for carefully listening at meetings, and for applying design review guidelines in a fair manner. She deserves credit for recent decisions by DRB to return overly scaled, poorly designed projects that were incompatible with our community standards. It should be noted that staff are recommending more than, more often, that DRB should not approve badly-designed projects, and in fact, council has recently supported appeals for two projects that did not hold up to the standards for well-designed work and tended to improve our city. Board Member Smith has helped to ensure that Glendale rightfully enforces the design guidelines of the city in a rigorous manner. This is a welcome change for Glendale and shows that she is making a difference, that she is making a positive contribution to the future of our city. Council should not be wasting time and taxpayer money on a situation such as this, especially in light of all the truly serious challenges that face us today. I want to thank Board Member Smith and give her the credit for her efforts that she deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Next caller.
Lee Strauss, you're live.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I really never thought I would be calling at a city council meeting to voice my opposition against a cancel culture attempt by a certain individual, but here we find ourselves. I've served on public committee for the State Bar of California, and I'm aware of the Bagley King Open Meeting Act, which requires meetings to be made public. Appearance is important, of course, especially for someone in a position of power, and many times, perception can become reality, even if nothing nefarious has transpired. Francesca Smith has made significant contributions to the design review board since her appointment last May. More importantly, she has consistently shown to advocate for actions which may be beneficial to the public, but not desired by other members of the DRB and/or city council. Ms. Smith has shown that she is an independent voice advocating for residents instead of rubber-stamping poor designs and ones that go against the designer review guidelines. By all appearances, the positive work that Mrs. Smith is doing for the community is trying to be canceled by publicly shaming her, by bringing this item in front of the city council. The COVID-19 pandemic has created many situations that are not ideal, including having to conduct business from our home. Everyone is learning how to function within new norms, and the rules of etiquette are still being worked out to this day for online meetings. But for the pandemic and having to video-conference into the meeting, we would not even be having this discussion. It is clear, Councilmember Brotman and Mrs. Smith have discussed the matter, and this incident will not be repeated. And I'm sure many of you have had a minor mistake as council members over the years and are not, that are not demonstrably or objectively wrong, or a specific rule has been broken. Ms. Smith was clearly not intoxicated, and her judgment was not impaired. It's clear as day. As human beings, we should be allowed to learn from our prior actions. Except for extreme circumstances, we don't get canceled as a result of them.
Thank you.
I support Mrs. Smith and the work she is doing 100%. Let's move on to more important matters facing our city.
Thank you very much. Next caller.
Scout Smithson, you're live. Scout?
My name is Scott Smithson, and I'm, thank you for allowing us to call in today. Francesca Smith is a stalwart of the community, and there is no reason to go any further in the depth of her knowledge and the beauty of the work that she has done for this city across the board. The hyperbole of Councilman Najarian and spending better part of 10 minutes browbeating a decision that was anything but less than a normal end-of-a-meeting thing, there is nothing in Mrs. Smith's conduct during the meeting that said anything about being drunk, being disorderly, being inebriated, or any of those things. She had a little sip of wine, and she may have drank more than two sips out of that glass. Nowhere in there did it ever impair, hurt her judgment whatsoever across the board. And then to have a disgruntled city person who lives here, whose house was under review, have their attorney call Mr. Najarian, and then in public forum, call her drunk and inebriated, is nothing short of slander. Not once during any of the meetings that she has ever attended, and in all of the different boards that she's ever represented or stood up for, for this city, has she ever been inappropriate. And to have her publicly shamed and have her name dragged through the mud by the hyperbole of an overzealous councilman is nothing short of shameful, and you should be ashamed of yourself, Council Najarian, for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Robert King, you're live. Robert, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. My name's Robert King, and I live in the Adams Hill area of Glendale, and I strongly support good design review in city government. I'm calling in support of Francesca Smith, and I wanted to say, in terms of her background, many callers have already said she's extremely qualified. She's a professional. But her work on design review board has shown devotion to good preparation, applying the design review guidelines, policies, and community plans to proposed projects. Her work has resulted in some decisions to return incompatible, overly large, or poorly-designed projects for redesign. This effort is much needed in Glendale to avoid further development that is very bland and does not meet the guidelines that the city itself has established. I sure hope that this report by Mr. Najarian is not an attempt to silence Francesca's work so that the board returns to allowing poor design or poor design to go unnoticed. The emails in the exhibit that I have read and the others have read suggest that the incident was resolved to the satisfaction of Mr. Brotman and should be left at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Next caller, please.
Rondi Werner, you're live. Rondi, go ahead.
Hello, Mayor Ogadzian, council members and staff. I'm Rondi Werner, Vice President of the Adams Hill Neighborhood Association, and I'm speaking on behalf of our association. We support Board Member Smith and would like to thank her for her hard work as an unpaid volunteer on the design review board. It is obvious that she takes her role seriously and is not afraid to call out poor design. Her diligence, SEQA background, and passion for architecture are among the many qualities that make her stand out on DRB. We also appreciate that Board Member Smith voted against two unpopular projects in Adams Hill, both of which were subsequently appealed and returned for redesign by city council. In fact, she has frequently been the voice of reason on DRB, and this distinction has not gone unnoticed, especially by financially or politically motivated critics whose projects were not approved. Publicly attacking a volunteer could dissuade other qualified people from serving on Glendale's boards and commissions in the future, and the city would not benefit from that outcome. Thanks to Board Member Smith's outstanding efforts, the design review board is successfully embracing its intended purpose per our municipal code to protect the community from the adverse effects of poor design and to encourage good professional design practices. We admire Board Member Smith's fortitude and applaud her efforts on behalf of our jewel city. We hope that she and other design review board members will continue to vote their conscience and vote objectively without fear of public shaming. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Werner. Next caller, please.
Danny Lee, you're live. Danny, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Danny Lee, and I want to say our, and I, for bringing this matter to the attention. I believe that you don't remember.
I'm sorry. What's your name, please?
Danny Lee.
Lee?
L-E-E.
Okay. Thank you.
I do believe that there should be some repercussions with this incident, especially when people are drinking and making decisions that will impact the citizens of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Next caller, please.
Bruce Merritt, you're live. Bruce, go ahead.
Good evening, members of the council. I have to say, I'm remarkably surprised that this thing has even come up to the agenda. It seems to me a true tempest in a teapot. I doubt if there's more than a handful of people in Glendale that give a whit about this relatively minor indiscretion on the part of Commissioner Smith, and it may well be that those are mostly frustrated developers and their attorneys, and it may be that some members of the council primarily listen to those. But I think that most, I would like to believe that the majority of members of this council listen to the thousands of people out here in this city, among their constituencies, who are upset about the amount of overdevelopment that is taking place in our city, about the huge, poorly-designed McMansions and apartment buildings that are destroying our neighborhoods and scarring our hillsides. This is a blight that the DRB has been ineffective in preventing for years. Commissioner Smith is a refreshing change of pace for that. She's highly qualified, hardworking, and always prepared. On the DRB, she has shown a much-needed criticism of poorly-designed, incompatible, and oversized developments in our neighborhood. Her indiscretion, and it was indeed perhaps an indiscretion, something that is not hard to imagine in this strange environment of COVID, where we're doing things completely differently. She's apologized for it. She said it will not happen again. This character assassination, which seems to be the point of this whole proceeding, is completely unjustified and outrageous. It's a tempest in a teapot, and I only hope that Commissioner Smith will not let it silence her or discredit her and will continue to defend our neighborhoods, which it seems to me the whole point of this agenda item is to prevent. Thank you for listening to me. Good evening.
Thank you, Bruce. Bruce, thank you. Next caller, please.
Anita Rinaldi-Harnden. Anita, you're live.
Hello, I'm Anita Rinaldi-Harnden. I am a homeowner and resident of Glendale, and I've been very concerned about some of these incompatible projects and buildings that are appearing in our city. Frankly, unsightly buildings and poor design are a much bigger concern of mine. Frankly, unsightly buildings and poor design are a much bigger concern of mine than Board Member Francesca Smith sitting wine. I believe it is very important that we have expert advice and analysis when it comes to proposed and future building projects. Francesca Smith is highly qualified in making design determinations and has 35 years of experience performing design review for both new builds and historic properties. It is very important Francesca Smith remain in her current position. Her expertise is needed and highly valued by the residents of Glendale and will also help ensure the integrity of our future design projects in our community. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Anita. Next caller.
Mike Mohill, you're live, Mike, go ahead.
Mike Mohill, you're live, Mike, go ahead.
Mr. Mohill?
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. Councilman Najarian, one had to ask oneself why you want to reprimand Francesca Smith. At the January 14, 2021 Design Review Board meeting, Mrs. Smith was seen during the WebEx GTV6 broadcast consuming a glass of wine. According to the staff report, she was in violation of the Brown Act. Councilman Najarian, with nearly 16 years on council and 16 years of experience dealing with the Brown Act violation, why couldn't you go behind closed doors and quietly inform Councilman Dan Brotman and his appointee Francisco Smith that public drinking alcohol was a violation of the Brown Act? Let me repeat myself. Why couldn't you go behind closed doors and quietly inform Councilman Dan Brotman and his appointee Francisco Smith that public drinking alcohol was a violation of the Brown Act? Instead, tonight, you plan to embarrass Councilman Brotman and Francesca Smith. Are you doing this because in 2022 you will be running for reelection with Councilman Brotman for a city council seat? Are you afraid that Councilman Brotman may be reelected to a council and you will not? Or are you planning not to run for reelection? Councilman Najarian, why didn't you call for publicly reprimanding your former council colleague, Councilman Dave Weaver, for his two sexual harassment cases at City Hall? Also, Mr. Weaver came to council often with alcohol in his breath, and you said nothing.
Mr. Mohill, your time is up.
Councilman Najarian, why didn't you call for publicly reprimanding the three-time convicted felon, former Councilman John Draymond? Council members and the whole city staff knew Mr. Draymond was not...
Next caller. Mr. Mohill, I let everybody and anybody to speak as much as they want. All this, almost a year which I have been here, all council members, they complained to me, "Why you let them talk and talk and talk?", the callers. And I said every time, "There are few callers are calling, and we have to appreciate which they call. Doesn't matter, it's three minutes and they talk five minutes." Today, we have lots of calls, and I'm trying to manage it. There are 18 calls so far came in, and they say there are lots of other calls. Please limit yourself and say whatever you want to say in two minutes. And still I'm saying, "Thank you." Whatever you guys are saying, I say, "Thank you." All right, next caller, please.
Kathy Nixon, you're live, Kathy, go ahead.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Kathy Nixon, and I'm a resident of Glendale. I know Francesca Smith. Mrs. Smith is a talented, educated individual with stellar qualifications that she brings to her position with the Glendale Design Review Board. We are lucky to have someone who carries out her duties with such passion and commitment. I am very disturbed by the accusations, slander, and character assassinations being made against Mrs. Smith. It is my opinion that it is a waste of time to talk about anything other than the assets that the city has in Board Member Mrs. Smith. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nixon. Next caller, please.
Susan Mont, you're live, Susan?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I want to speak on behalf of Francesca Smith tonight. She's an excellent member of the DRB. The responsibility of the DRB is to apply the Design Review Guidelines and Hillside Development Review Policy, and she does both of those things rigorously and thoughtfully. I've had personal experience with the DRB prior to Francesca's appointment, and unfortunately, at that time, the board was complacent and defended their positions of why projects should be approved instead of whether they're compatible with their surroundings. In my case, the result of their decision has led to a lawsuit that's gone on for a year and a half. It's been costly for all parties and has further impacted the design of the applicant's remodel significantly. Additionally, we now have neighbors planting rows of trees in an effort to regain lost privacy and blocked views. If the guidelines had been followed in the first place, this could have been avoided. With Mrs. Smith's appointment, we now have accountability at the DRB and a much-needed reset that puts the guidelines at the forefront of those decisions. This has been good for our residential areas, good for our neighbors. While some may not be getting everything they want, the general health of the community and the architectural integrity in Glendale are all the better for it. Board Member Smith is doing a great job, and Glendale's lucky to have her. Having a glass of wine at the end of a meeting during COVID, when we're all getting used to what this is, even though it's been going on a year, is really such a minor infraction. It's not even an infraction. It's just, it's an embarrassment that we're sitting here talking about it.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Mel Arin, Mel?
Hi, thank you for taking my call. I'd like to thank Mrs. Smith for the work she's done for our community. However, like anyone in her position with the city, I think we should hold her accountable for her unprofessional behavior. If you consider it minor drinking, we have to think more about what this behavior represents for our public and what will let slide. I trust that the city will not let such an unprofessional behavior slide, and I hope we can come to a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mel. Next caller.
Jeremy Sanders, you're live, Jeremy?
Jerome, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I had a prepared statement, but I have to say Mr. Najarian's presentation was thorough, and it was thoroughly pedantic, tedious, and embarrassing. Making this a public issue heard before the council is unnecessary, and it's bad judgment. Now, in support of Ms. Smith, I'm a member of the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association Board. We think she's a very valuable member of the Design Review Board. She's an effective commissioner and a welcome presence on a board that's long been in need of diversity and improvement in its application, or has been too often the case, the misapplication of guidelines and policies. The incident in question here should be excused and put to rest. Ms. Smith has explained herself to Mr. Brotman and apologized. Despite what Mr. Najarian, how he reads it, I see it as an apology. He has accepted the apology and notified the council accordingly, and it should be the end of it. What we're really here tonight is because it appears the council is being pressured to act against Mrs. Smith by disgruntled developers threatening to sue who have had projects rejected by the DRB and are using this incident as a pretext to get her off the board and have their way with the city. Any such action would be wrong and an inexcusable and craven capitulation to political expediency. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanders, I guess. Okay, next caller, please.
Gloria Sander, you're live, Gloria, go ahead.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Gloria Sander. I'm an art and architectural historian. I spearheaded the project to have 144 homes designated for the North Cumberland Heights Historic District. Councilman Brotman appointed an expert to the DRB with deep experience in historic preservation. She stands out by virtue of her education and her volunteer work to ensure a thoughtful and successful future for the city's development. At the Design Review Board, Ms. Smith asks important questions regarding projects that come up for review. Ms. Smith holds developers responsible for meeting guidelines laid out by the city. Prejudiciousness is important given the DRB's past history of approving too many bad designs. The excessive zeal attached to critiquing a beverage she had at the end of a meeting and theatrically underscored by Mr. Najarian this evening suggests a furtive plot is afoot. It suggests a play to promote the agenda of developers. And perhaps these machinations are also related to her gender. She should not be dismissed from the DRB because she is doing her job, and she's doing it well. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Next caller, please.
I have a caller here with no name. It says anonymous. Go ahead, speak.
Hello, my name is Tammy Johnson. Good evening, members of the council. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to all these calls. I'm Tammy Johnson, and I'm a Glendale native. For everyone that is praising Board Member Smith, the question is not how amazing she was in the past, it's about the present. Let me present to you an analogy. If I am an upstanding citizen and I decide to rob a bank, are you going to let me go because I've done great things in the past? Absolutely not. I understand that this is not anything close to a bank robbery, but this is largely inappropriate and does not set a good example whatsoever. If you think that this is appropriate, what happens to the next person? If we let this slide, would we come to the consensus that one drink is the limit? Or do we wait for the next person to drink during a public meeting to set that limit? Also, let me present to you one more scenario. What would happen if we were not in a pandemic and she was drinking wine during an in-person review board meeting? What would happen in that scenario? Just because we are now online doesn't mean it's any less professional. What occurred is very unprofessional, plain and simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Next caller, please.
Laura Crook, Laura, you're live.
Hi, good evening. My name is Laura Crook, and I am calling in support of Francesca Smith. The quality of work and expertise Mrs. Smith exhibits when it comes to architectural projects is invaluable to our city. As a resident and voter, I find it puzzling why this is an official topic, especially during a pandemic. People in our city are suffering, but sure, let's officially talk about an alleged glass of wine during an evening Zoom meeting that did not officially break any rules. Now, I'm also a mother, and that gives me a keen sense for when issues presented is not the issue at hand. Clearly, big feelings are being projected here, and as a fellow adult, I am for those who take issue with Mrs. Smith to either update your bylaws or have a conversation with her about your actual concerns instead of publicly bullying her. It is an embarrassing day for the city of Glendale when a mom is needed to step in and tell you to make better choices. Please do not waste everyone's time with such nonsense again. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Next caller, please.
Derek Cattell, Derek, you're live.
Hi, good evening. I'm Derek Cattell, resident of Glendale for over 20 years. I'm calling in support of Francesca Smith. I've known Francesca personally and professionally for about 10 years now. Francesca is hardworking, intelligent, a passionate professional with the ability to utilize her experience and expertise on the Design Review Board that culminates in deep concern for our city. I think she's doing a wonderful job and brings exceptional value to her position. Plus, I'm pretty sure it's all voluntary. With all the critical issues going on in the city and world today, city council should not be wasting any more time on this topic. Let's stop the personal public attacks and move forward and allow Miss Smith to continue her excellence serving on DRB. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Derek. Okay, next caller, please.
Tigran Basmagyan, you're live. Tigran, go ahead. Tigran, can you hear me? Tigran, you're live. Mr. Basmagyan, you're live. Mayor, it seems like there's nobody there.
This was the last caller?
No, no, there's...
So let's go to the next one, and hopefully, if he wants, he will call back.
Mike Peters, you're live, Mike, go ahead.
Hi, Mayor, council members. Thank you very much for taking the time to discuss the matter of drinking alcoholic beverages during a publicly televised board meeting. I think it's important to acknowledge that this did occur, and it's imperative that it's not downplayed. And board members are much like council members, and they're in the public eye and should act in a manner that's beyond reproach. They make decisions that impact people's lives and possibly their livelihood. It's irresponsible to accept such behavior. And this type of behavior and its acceptance, it will erode the public's trust in all elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter. Next caller, please.
Christine Salceda, you're live. Christine, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. I'm calling because I am sad, disappointed, and disturbed that city council has taken up this as an agenda item, public shaming, and that they use better judgment of what to spend the taxpayers' money on. But I'm embarrassed for you, and I'm embarrassed for Glendale that this kind of behavior is happening in the city of Glendale. I've lived for over 30 years, and I really am ashamed that our city council is doing this. Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Cassandra John, you're live. Cassandra, go ahead.
Hi, yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. I would like to say that I believe drinking alcohol while conducting meetings is completely inappropriate. This affects people's lives, and I do not think this results in good decision-making. I believe the committee member must be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassandra. Next caller, please.
Scott Frazier, you're live. Scott, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Scott Frazier, and I've been familiar with the work at the DRB over several years. And I have to say, I was often frustrated by the approval of some poor-quality projects. In contrast, I've been very impressed with Francesca Smith's expertise and commitment to detail. She makes clear statements drawing on her knowledge of Glendale's design guidelines and on the often-ignored hillside policy document. She seems to be having a transformative impact on the DRB, and of course, that might be why we're having this discussion tonight. The question of whether or not she had a glass of wine during a meeting seems to me trivial, and I have a really hard time imagining that the documented sip of wine each 10 to 20 minutes compromised her judgment. The issue is a waste of your energies, which are really needed for far, far more pressing challenges than this by the city. I'm embarrassed by this overreaction. If the council feels such behavior is wrong, please set a clear policy, and please just move on.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Thank... Next caller, please.
Michelle Wright, you're live, Michelle? Michelle? Michelle Wright, you're live. Go ahead, Michelle.
Good evening. Thank you for taking my call. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Councilmember Ara Najarian for bringing this matter to the forefront and not downplaying it as if it has no bearing or impact on the community. No city official, member of a board or commission should be drinking alcohol while making significant decisions that impact community members. The mere perception of a city official drinking alcohol while making important decisions will place doubt on the process. Sure, a glass of wine, a cold beer may sound nice after a long day at work, but alcohol should not be consumed during a board meeting. I urge you to take this important matter very seriously and not downplay the significance of this type of unprofessional behavior. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Next caller, please.
I have a caller with the name anonymous. Go ahead, you're live.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
I think that Mr. Najarian explained real well what has happened, and I would just like to say, this is the orchestrated and organized campaign to justify an unjustifiable act. I think it's very proper... I think it's very proper that whatever city charter allows to discipline somebody, I think you should, as a council member, just follow that rule. I know the majority of the people called in favor of Mr. Smith, but here, we are not talking a number game. I am sure half of the Armenian community have no clue what this meeting is about. So, I am one of those that has been on the phone almost 15 minutes. I'm sure many of the supporters of this initiative are deterring to what Mr. Ara Najarian said and I would think that City Council should take this matter very, very seriously. You have a great day.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Cherie Carroll, you're live. Cherie?
Thank you. Hi, this is Cherie Carroll and I represent the Whiting Woods Homeowners Association. Francesca's had more than 35 years' experience as an architectural historian and she's highly qualified for her position on the DRB. She consistently rejects poorly-designed projects that are incompatible with the guidelines that, when followed, make our city, City of Glendale, a more beautiful and architecturally harmonious place to live, work, and play. Was this a mistake? It was. And it has been addressed previously in an email in which Miss Smith took ownership of her mistake as well as apologized. And really, as a matter of fact, if Miss Smith had been drinking out of a different style of glass, this wouldn't even be a conversation. I'm incredibly disappointed that the council is choosing to waste more staff time and more taxpayer money over this non-issue. A tempest in a teapot, wind in a wine glass, if you will. Let's get to work on the challenges that actually make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Next caller, please.
Jen Heggins, you're live. Jen?
Yes, hi. I've been a Glendale resident here for over 35 years. My husband and I have finally decided to remodel and make some changes to our home and in order to move forward with our process, we will need to take our project designed in front of the review board. When it is, we will need for the commissioners to concentrate and understand our case wholly. No one wants to have to go back to the drawing board with their architect and spend more money because the DRB commissioners weren't paying attention during the meetings, for whatever reason, even if it's for as briefly as 30 seconds, texting, playing with their dog, talking to their spouses or their kids, et cetera, but especially if it's because they are inebriated during a DRB hearing. Crucial points could quickly be missed if commissioners don't pay close attention. The DRB process is hard enough as it is. Most callers tonight seem to be missing the point completely and downplaying it. The DRB is a very important commission, if not the most important commission. This is not a joke, not a minor incident, nor a waste of time being on today's agenda, as stated by previous callers. If Francesca Smith is a serious and qualified commissioner, as described by many of the previous callers, she should have known better not to drink alcoholic beverages during a DRB meeting. Councilmembers and mayors having a cocktail during an installation meeting or social gatherings cannot be compared to crucial DRB meetings. It is not okay for any DRB commissioner to have a cocktail just before and/or continue to do so during DRB meetings, much less flaunting the fact that they're having a glass of wine to the TV cameras as Francesca Smith did, whether they had a hard day at work or not. Glendale homeowners spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on plans, permits, and construction materials for their additions and modifications and we all deserve to have coherent and unintoxicated commissioners to follow our case closely, Zoom or no Zoom. Commissioners, just because you're in the comfort of your home during the meetings doesn't mean you need to take your positions lightly. If you wouldn't drink alcoholic beverages while meeting in person at the city, you shouldn't be drinking alcoholic beverages during the meetings while home either. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heggins. Thank you. Next caller.
Syrik Deft. Syrik?
Yes, thank you. I would just like to make a brief comment that I fully believe that Mr. Najarian is in the right and while I appreciate an incredibly well-organized campaign of friends calling in, it's very clear that none of those people actually watched the design and review board meeting. So let's just pretend you spent $40,000 in fees and waited 12 months to get there and that would be me. I was one of the three homes that was up for approval. And just to completely contrast the other callers who talked about it in debt, my home was approved, but not by Miss Smith. And her, if you were to watch it, her behavior was incredibly erratic. She disapproved ours because she said it didn't have shutters. And if you were to watch the rest of the meeting, she wanted, she shot down another one because of the use of hardy boards. She wanted natural materials, like wood, to which people said, "But wood violates the fire code." So there's just a bit of a disconnect here. Regardless of whatever her incredible track record is, I would encourage people to watch the actual meeting itself. I can't say there's any connection to alcohol, but suffice to say, we wrote in saying it made a mockery of the process. We spent, again, $40,000. I just think it's some professional punishment, irrelevant. The behavior is unacceptable. It should be chastised. That's all I have to say. I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Syrik. Next caller, please.
Jackie, you're live. Jackie, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for taking my call. This is really embarrassing that this is happening to DRB and it's appalling to see people think that it's okay that she did this. And it's sad to say, in 30 years, she probably called all her friends in every little community she was in and everybody's calling and telling us that she's absolutely wonderful. This is just not okay for any citizen to do that who holds public office. And my other question, which is a serious question, I want to know if the City of Council and the City Attorney is gonna take her judgment and say, "Yes, she was fine. So what? It was one glass." I want to know how serious the Attorney's Office in the City of Glendale is going to take this matter. And that's about it. And it's really embarrassing that all these people think this is okay. It's really, really sad. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Marcia Hanford, you're live. Marcia?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Marcia Hanford. I have been a viewer of city meetings on GTV6 for many, many years. So I saw this meeting as well as many others. This incident wasn't even something I noticed until this topic came up. So, because I'm accustomed to seeing people sip beverages out of mugs or bottles or whatever, so I didn't even notice, but I do take this seriously and I don't hear that anybody doesn't think it shouldn't have been corrected. I think it has been corrected. Councilmember Brotman, who appointed her, thinks the matter is closed and I think it's been duly noted. This was a mistake and we move on. I'm really appalled at the magnitude that this has become tonight with the hyperbole and the huge cases it's becoming. It was a mistake. Let's move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hanford. Next caller, please.
Robin Se, you're live. Robin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'd just like to say, Miss Smith is a competent, valuable member of the DRB and yes, I did watch that meeting and I also don't remember noticing specifically wine happening. I noticed people drinking things out of various vessels and that was really it. To throw her under the bus and besmirch her name because of such an overblown melodramatic overreaction would be a huge detriment to our city, which just has way much bigger issues to spend its time addressing. She has acknowledged what happened. She's apologized and she has assured Councilmember Brotman that it won't happen again. He's accepted that and is prepared to move on and I believe the rest of the City Council should do the same. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Se. Next caller, please.
John Crook, you're live. John?
Hi, thank you. My name is John Crook. I've been a resident of Glendale for about a decade. Yeah, I've been listening to the council member and all the commenters. You know, I just want to go back to what was said by the council member again. You know, he never said that he believed that she was inebriated in any way. He said that he saw that she had a wine glass that she took a sip out of. He assumed that there was wine in there. He also read off the policies for the city, but there was no specific policy about drinking alcohol. He communicated that when this was, when Francesca was told about this, that she, you know, wrote this letter back apologizing and then said she would never do it again. So what I don't understand is why we're using this time to go over this scenario again and again and again when the council members have just come with a motion to set a new policy in place for these type of board meetings saying, you know, "No alcohol of any type in these meetings, no cold medication, nothing that will affect your judgment or any type of thought processes in one of these meetings." You know, that might actually have been a useful use of this time tonight to actually put a policy in place in the future. Instead, you know, you're taking someone who's highly skilled, who has given hundreds of their hours every year for free to the city, highly skilled professional work, to the city for free, who has made this one, this one drink in one meeting that wasn't a rule at that time, not specifically, and, you know, has given so much to the community. So, you know, this doesn't pass the sniff test to me. I mean, if this was really about alcohol in meetings, then this would be about putting a new policy in place, not passing recriminations on somebody who has given so much to the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Crook. John, next caller, please.
Joanne Head, you're live. Joanne?
Good evening and thank you for taking my call on this long night. I'm a 25-year resident of Glendale and the founder and advocate for the Glendale Rancho Neighborhood Association and I just wish Francesca Smith had been around on DRB when we, a couple of years ago, were fighting a truly awful hotel design on Victory near Winchester. We even lost to appeal with very small concessions asked for. Anyway, my initial reaction was that DRB member Smith had a long, hard day, did her due diligence in the role she's duty-bound and very qualified for, and a glass of wine raised while in the closing moments on Zoom at DRB didn't shock me, nor did I think how inappropriate it was. These are exceptional times and occasionally folks may just raise a toast to that. The more professional, diplomatic, and less snarky response by the two councilmen would have been to reserve their comments for this perceived lack of decorum in a post-meeting message to her personally, discreetly, and in private at City Hall. It struck many that so talented and dedicated a volunteer public servant deserved that much respect, we feel. Instead, the councilmen seemed to be intentionally shaming Francesca Smith and by association, Councilman Dan Brotman, who generated her appointment. So, I appreciate who she is and what she stands for and I think this has been way overblown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Head. Next caller, please.
Zaska Agina?
Yes, Ziska Agina, thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, I am at a loss to actually understand what exactly Francesca Smith is being accused of. Did she violate any actual city policy? As you well know, her impeccable credentials, her unquestionable expertise, and her extensive experience make her a much sought-after consultant by the cities of Los Angeles and Pasadena, as well as an ideal member of the design review board, which desperately needed someone with historic preservation experience for a long time. The DRB also benefits from her knowledge of applying local, state, and national requirements to newbuild projects. Glendale is very fortunate to have her serving as a volunteer in this capacity. Those of us who have heard her testify citing hard facts find her knowledge, competence, and professionalism most impressive. Given so many critical issues facing the city, it seems unworthy of City Council to be wasting time on a frivolous and inconsequential issue. Thank you and stay well.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Pina Jones, you're live. Pina, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I agree with Councilman Najarian and the only reason I'm calling in tonight, and I always watch the City Council meetings and different design boards and I watch them with my children, is that I am appalled to hear members of the Glendale community, including members of the Adams Hill Estate Community or the North Hills West and, you know, all these different communities and people who, you know, sound very professional, make light of this matter and say, "It's such a minor infraction and it's not a big deal. What's wrong with this? You know, why are we spending time on this?" But it is a big deal. What is happening here? You have to, even if you're an elected and appointed official, you are bound to a higher standard, a higher standard, whether you're a volunteer or not. Miss Smith is not portraying that and she is a design review member and is responsible and bound to the highest standard. She may be extremely qualified or whatever it may be, but that is not an excuse to be consuming alcohol and that being okay. Drinking on the job, any job, is irresponsible. You know, my kids are watching this. We, you know, we're talking about government and all these things and this is not a joke. I'm sorry, but why is there training required for a board member to know not to be drinking on the job? It doesn't make any sense to me. Code of Conduct definitely does apply to volunteers, DRB members. This is irresponsible. Is it okay for my kids' volunteer teacher's aide to be drinking on the job on Zoom? You know, we all have long days, hard days. This is not a social gathering. Is it okay for a volunteer hospital worker to be drinking because they're volunteering?
Ms. Jones. Ms. Jones.
Why are the majority of the callers in the city of Glendale supporting this activity and making light of it?
Ms. Jones, thank you very much. We have lots of callers. Thank you. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Good day. Hold on. Mr. Mayor, just briefly, I know we have about another 10 or 12 callers and...
We have 10 callers?
We still have 11 callers, sir.
So my, I was going to ask, normally you have the ability to say at a certain time you're going to stop taking further calls. It's a little bit hard with the system because people might keep calling in, but I think now that we're, I don't want to say down to 15, but now that we're down to 15, maybe you want to give folks another, they want to call and say, "No more callers at this point going forward"?
No, I give callers one minute. And I will take like at least 11 callers, right? One minute, 11 callers. No more callers. Accepted.
Kathy Grayson, you're live. Kathy?
One minute, please.
Kathy? Kathy, can you hear us? Ms. Grayson, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, Kathy, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you and good evening. My name is Kathy Grayson and I would also like to speak on behalf of Francesca Smith tonight. I believe the design review board is crucial in ensuring the future positive architectural development of Glendale. I've been following Francesca's work on the board and it is clear she is a commissioner of the highest level. She's bringing expertise as an architectural historian. She has over 35 years of real experience and I've seen a broad knowledge of her being able to follow the policies and guidelines that need to be followed by the board. I think the city of Glendale is fortunate to have someone of her stature on the DRB. Francesca was appointed by Dan Brotman. He stands by her as well we all should. This issue is not worthy of the time and attention that's been given to it, considering that the city has some very real issues to address right now as we're in the middle of a pandemic. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Grayson. Next caller, please.
Ardi Markarian. Ardi?
Arti Markarian, Arti, go ahead.
Hi, I just want to thank you to Mr. Smith for teaching us how to get drunk on a Zoom meeting. I've been doing that and I've been getting away with it. And I just want to tell Mr. Najarian, thank you for his knowledge, all the, all the great work that he's done, and we should be a schmuck to ruling the city. We need more people like Mr. Najarian and other people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markarian. Next caller, please. Robert Hoover, you're live. Robert?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is Robert Hoover, resident of Glendale. Thank you for taking my call. I wanted to speak in opposition of Francesca. Um, I believe this is not an issue of her qualifications or her education, her time served, uh, on the board. Uh, this is a very serious matter. I hear a lot of people calling in. I believe they're not even residents of Glendale. Um, education, experience has nothing to do with being irresponsible. Okay? So if I have all the qualifications in the world and I get behind the wheel of a car, right, and I drive and I get in an accident, do I tell everybody, hey, I was president, I was number one in my class, I have 35 years' experience? Okay? That's not going to hold. That's, that's totally, what she did was irresponsible. That is not acceptable. Okay? And then, and, and she did take responsibility. Uh, I, I received a glass of wine spritzer with ice in it? No. We don't know what went on behind the scenes. Okay? I think she should be removed. I demand she removed immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Next caller, please. Leslie Rosson, Leslie, you're live.
Yes, hi. I'll be fast. Well, perhaps if Mr. Brotman had the character and leadership, we wouldn't be here tonight wasting all of this time. But, um, circling back, um, all of these anti-development callers and the G H C C clan of groups that are calling in, well, all of them have admitted exactly what Mr. Najarian had originally asked of everyone in the very beginning. One, was she drinking alcohol? And everyone said yes. And two, was it wrong? And everyone said yes. So let's get back to the real focused issue that Mr. Najarian brought forth in the beginning. This position is to serve at the pleasure of the council. She didn't even, she didn't even apologize to the city, just to Mr. Brotman. She can be removed for any reason, but the damage to, and the, to the appearance of fairness and professionalism on the DRB has already been done. The damage is done. She may be a great gal, but the damage is done. Just keeping her on would send the wrong message to the citizens of the city, many of whom pay tens of thousands of dollars to have their projects decided on by a commissioner who's drinking alcohol during the meeting. This is unfair. Hey, news flash, council members, the DRB is the least trusted commission in the city of Glendale. People believe backdoor deals are done to the detriment of the little guy. People spend a lot of money to fight their case. If Brotman had any character, he would have had, we would have removed her instantly. If Francesca had any character, she would have resigned for the good of the city. There are plenty of qualified individuals who can be professional and not shame the commission. Let's stop the erosion of trust between the citizens and the DRB and do the right thing by removing and replacing commissioners.
The time is up. Ms. Rosen, thank you. Next caller, please. Erica Passman, Erica, you're live. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Erica Passman, and I did attend or do the Zoom with the January 14th meeting because there was a project on my street of which, um, I appreciated Ms. Smith's insight into the project and analysis of it in relation to the city's design guidelines and hillside policy. And the city staff and some Design Review Board members seem to not understand that these policies, um, affect projects that are, are going to be built within the city. Um, I did find that Ms. Smith during that time, she didn't appear intoxicated to me, and I don't even see how, what she wrote in her email to Mr. Brotman even admitted that she was drinking. It just said that she had a glass with soda and ice in it. Um, so I don't know how the city would go about proving that she was drinking because it didn't seem like she even admitted that she was. Um, but my opinion about Ms. Smith is she was thorough in her examination.
Ms. Pass, your time is up. Maybe another time. Thank you. Lorna Vartanian, you're live. Lorna, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Agajian, members of the council and staff. My name is Lorna Vartanian, and I am a Commissioner on the city's Historic Preservation Commission. While I am aware it is of utmost importance that each person who represents the city in an official capacity do so with the utmost of care, it seems to me that this particular incident is being blown out of proportion. Commissioner Smith has acknowledged and apologized for her one-time oversight, and I'm certain everyone has learned an important lesson about Zoom etiquette and the power of perception as a part of this process. I've seen nothing that indicates that Commissioner Smith's ability to perform her obligations was impaired during the meeting which corresponds with this complaint, and it is obvious that she is a well-qualified member of the DRB. I urge the City Council to ask staff to note and file this report, to provide training to new and returning commission and board members, and to please turn your attention to the many more important matters which I know you have before you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Martin Andrews, you're live. Martin, go ahead.
Uh, good evening. My name is, uh, my name is Martin Andrews, and I am a longtime resident of Glendale. Mrs. Smith, you were caught red-handed. The people of Glendale deserve an apology. Many callers tonight have defended the actions of Miss Smith by saying everyone drinks in meetings, and this is commonplace. This is clearly not an issue of January 14th, but a major problem among our commission members. If we do not act, this will continue to happen, as proven by her own supporters. This is Design Review. This isn't happy hour. Can our police or firemen have drinks while on shift? They sure have harder days at work than Francesca. How about our GUSD teachers? Where do we draw the line? Francesca's expertise and work ethic have been praised tonight. However, that is not the question. Even Dale Earnhardt Jr., one of the best racecar drivers of all time, is dangerous behind the wheel if he has been drinking. This is negligence on behalf of Miss Smith and an embarrassment to the city of Glendale. DRB is Design Review Board, not Delta, Row, Beta. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Next caller, please. John Santrossian? Go ahead. John? John? John Santrossian? Mr. Santrossian? Next caller, Mayor. Go ahead, next one. If he comes back, then you can ask. Leanna Zelli? Leanna, you're live. Go ahead.
Hi, yes, thank you. Um, I have been a resident of Glendale for over 30 years. I love this city, and I find this specific instance so embarrassing. We see it from the top, the highest positions in government, now all the way down to Glendale, where public officials think they can do whatever they want and get away with it. It doesn't matter if it's a volunteer position or a paid position. The trust is lost with the public now. How do we know she has not done this in the past? How do we know that she will not? Because apparently she has a lot of supporters around her saying this is not a big deal and we're just being melodramatic. If trust is lost in our public officials, what is to happen next? I do not believe that this is just a minor incident that we can look past. This should not have happened. It did, and for the sake of the city, Ms. Smith needs to be removed because this is, yes, a waste of time because the people who are able to remove her did not do so. So now we have to call in and spend taxpayer money having this discussion.
Your time is up. I'm sorry. Thank you for your calling. Thank, thank you. Next caller, please. Catherine Yurka, you're live. Kathy? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Agajian. I'm going to ask for two minutes because I've been waiting for an hour to speak.
I can't do it today.
Yes, you can.
No. I mean, I, we had 55 callers and still there are four or five callers. Please, one minute, another time. I, generally I left, last time you called, you passed three minutes, even six minutes. I didn't say anything, but today's, okay, one and a half minutes. Can we do one and a half minutes, please? Mr.? Yeah. Okay, one and a half minutes.
Thank you. I'm calling on behalf of the Verdugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association. We are sorry that a few council members who object to the changes Francesca Smith is bringing decided that this was the appropriate way to handle the appearance of, of wineglass at, at the borders of a DRB meeting. I know Mr. Najarian thinks her experience, her competence, and thoughtfulness are irrelevant. I have sat through, we have sat through too many DRB meetings where board members were unprepared, had not made site visits, and had nothing to say except, I don't have a problem with it, to be as sanguine as Mr. Najarian. While Mr. Najarian was on the lookout for errant wineglasses at the January 14th DRB meeting, he apparently did not pay attention to the real news. His appointee to the DRB, who I will not name because I don't want to be that big a jerk, had no idea at all that the hillside development review policy, which is written into the municipal code, actually regulates the size of a building. This person is serving his third term on the DRB. How does he not know that? Mr. Najarian, I certainly hope you will have a stern talk with him, and I hope you will ask him to apologize to all of the residents who have been subject to inappropriate hillside development as a result of ignorance of essential policies, including several callers who spoke tonight. Francesca Smith asked no one to call in on her behalf. Um, she, she, this is happening, um, apart from her. Um, the person whose project was rejected neglected to mention that staff recommended it for return and redesign.
Ms. Yurka, please.
Thank you. I do ask that you note and file and move on to more important business. Thank you, Mayor Agajian.
Thank you. Next caller. Megan Sayers, you're live. Megan? Megan? Go ahead.
Hi. Thank you. Um, I'm calling in support of Francesca Smith, but so many people have already spoken to her depth of experience and positive impact, so I really just want to voice my disappointment with the way that this has been handled. Um, like other callers, I question the resources that it took to scour the meeting video and build a PowerPoint that seems mostly based on morality shaming. Um, the fact that this has been compared to a bank robbery or a drunk driving accident is honestly crazy to me. So I would just ask if this is the most constructive use of our council member's time, especially since it seems like it took significant research to even find an alleged code violation. So like an earlier caller mentioned, if the concern is public propriety, why not spend the time communicating a clear Code of Conduct during virtual meetings? I think we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please. Lauren Mohill, you're live. Lauren, go ahead.
Yes, this is Lorraine Mohill. Um, council members, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, I just wanted to say that Councilman Najarian, uh, he didn't do anything when Mr. Dave Weaver, former mayor, came to council, often with alcohol on his breath, and he said nothing. Uh, Councilman Najarian, why didn't you call for publicly recommending the three-time convicted felon, former Councilman John Draymond? Council members and the whole city staff knew Mr. Draymond was not taking out permits on his condo makeover by the subcontractors of ADI. Also, in 2020, Councilman Najarian, you tried to embarrass former city clerk and now Councilman Arti Kasakian over campaign filing papers. Councilman Najarian, you seem to relish trying to embarrass your council candidate challengers. Also, Councilman Najarian, trying to embarrass your political rivals seems to be your MO. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Last caller, Mayor. Carrie Field, you're live. Carrie?
Hi. This is Carrie Field. I'm calling because, just like the last few callers, this agenda item is the height of hypocrisy. There have been past council members and DRB members who have had actual, real scandals that the, it's surprising the press didn't pick up on, and sometimes they did. Others were involved with illegal activities and had to resign, were forced to resign because of the illegal activities that they were involved in. If they didn't resign, they were never brought up like this by council, and they certainly had much more of a right to have been so. In the past, through my own experiences with the Design Review Board and City of Glendale's permitting and planning departments, it has always seemed, and I've had many people tell me, that city council members and members of staff are in the pocket of developers. And if you want to talk about eroding the public trust, this witch hunt, this sexist witch hunt is exactly the problem going on in Glendale.
Thank you, Ms. Carrie. Uh, okay. All right, we accepted 58 calls. Yeah, 56. Actually, there are 12 of them that they didn't speak, but you accepted the calls. So that's why you have, okay? Uh, anyway, now is the time. Is anybody wants to say something, Mr. Najarian? Do you have something to say, or we go to other members? Uh, or you want to speak?
I'll let someone else talk if they'd like.
Okay. Who wants to go first? Is there anybody wants to speak from my council colleagues?
I, um...
Mr. Brot, yes, Councilmember Brot.
I definitely have some things to share. Um, before I start, I want to strongly object to one of the first callers, a Mr. Gavorkian, who made a statement that was very disturbing. He said, in very definitive terms, that she was clearly an intoxicated board member, clearly an intoxicated board member. I just think that's slander. I'm very disappointed. And I should note that he's really just looking for a do-over. His project, or the project of his client, was rejected four to one. It was sent back for redesign on a four to one vote. So I just, um, I need to express my, my, um, disappointment with that statement. Um, I, I have something to say. I, I wrote something out here. I may ad lib as I go, but first of all, I want to make a statement, and this is really for the public, not for my colleagues, because my colleagues know the score. But the public may not fully understand what's going on here. This is not about a volunteer commissioner having a wine spritzer at home at the end of a meeting. That's not what this is. If that were really the concern, it could have been easily resolved with a private conversation to make sure that she understood that what she did was wrong and that she doesn't repeat it. And that's in fact what happened. The city attorney brought the issue to my attention, asked me to speak to her. I spoke to her. She immediately understood and apologized. She realized it was a judgment error. Everybody makes a mistake. She assured me it wouldn't happen again. I accepted that apology. I accepted that people make mistakes, even people with a lot of experience. And I thought that that should be the end of it. If this were actually about a broader issue of drinking during public meetings, then that could have been discussed generally. That could have been discussed as a general matter without having to drag her name through the mud, the way Councilmember Najarian did tonight. But as I said, this issue isn't about the spritzer. That's a smokescreen. The issue is about certain people being unhappy with what my appointed commissioner and I are trying to do. I nominated Francesca Smith because I wanted somebody not just with design expertise and an eagle eye and somebody willing to work hard and do their homework, but I nominated her because I wanted somebody who believes that it's time to start respecting our own design guidelines, which among other things require compatibility with surrounding building fabric. I nominated Francesca Smith because I wanted somebody who doesn't accept the garbage that often passes for good design here. Someone who believes that Glendale residents actually deserve better. I heard this again and again when I was campaigning for this office, at coffees, at candidate forums, and when I knocked on doors. Our residents are unhappy with the mansionization that occurs. They're unhappy with disregard for projects that disfigure hillsides. They're unhappy with the cavernous apartment blocks like the ones we're now stuck with on Central Avenue, which my colleague, Councilmember Kasakian, has called the Stucco Canyon. on Central Avenue, which my colleague, Councilmember Kasakian, has called the Stucco Canyon. I promised to do something about this and I intend to keep that promise. But changes to the status quo tend to upset people, especially people with developer friends that are used to getting a free pass. How do I know this is what it's about? Because I got a call from the mayor threatening me with a hearing, suggesting that I ask Francesca to resign. He literally called me to say that one of my colleagues, which I assumed was Mr. Najarian, planned to raise the issue and suggested that if I get rid of Francesca, maybe it wouldn't My point is to make clear what's really going on here. Don't get me wrong, I don't condone what she did. It is not right to drink during a council meeting. It is not right to drink during a commission meeting or a board meeting. But I accept that it was a one-off judgment error, that it had no effect whatsoever on her abilities or decisions that day, and that it won't happen again. And that's good enough for me. I think this is shameful. I think Councilmember Najarian should be ashamed of himself for putting her through this public spectacle, especially targeting a woman and a woman with a severe disability that can cause slurred speech, so much so that she has to carry around a card explaining that she's not intoxicated. So the question of being perceived to be drunk is very, very sensitive to her. And despite all this, she dedicates so much of her time to this unpaid volunteer role. She's one of the few who actually prepares for meetings by visiting sites, who actually takes the time to study sequel rules, our design guidelines, our community plans, when so many other commissioners walk in completely unprepared. To do this to her is shameful and I'm deeply, deeply disappointed with my colleagues for wasting so much time on this when we should be dealing with things that matter to the people of Glendale. And that's all I really have to say.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other comment from my other colleagues, Mr. Kasakian or Ms. Devine? That's great. Okay, anyway.
I'd like to hear from my other colleagues, please, before I speak.
Well, between Artie and you.
Okay.
I guess.
And the mayor.
Ms. Kasakian, do you have anything?
Listen, I, you know, I'm at a loss. Never have more words been spoken for a shorter report than this. And if we do know and file this, I think we ought to file it under the folder of First World Problems. Given everything that we're dealing with globally, locally, businesses suffering, we're sitting here talking about a wine glass. And, you know, I don't know. I want to assure, by the way, any of the people I nominated for boards earlier this evening and anyone else that's considering applying that, it does get better. This is not indicative of how we view volunteer service of our board members and commissioners. And I have no doubt that the person in question, I don't want to bring their name up again, I think it's already been put in the report and has been spoken enough times today. I don't think the issue is necessarily one individual, but I have no doubt that she's knowledgeable on matters related to design review, that they are competent in their knowledge of the issues that they're dealing with. But I do, I do have to say this, I am disappointed in how many callers are dismissive of the consumption of, the idea of the consumption of alcohol during an official proceeding, because we don't even know if it was necessarily alcohol, regardless of this person's gender, their opinions or experience. Now, we don't know if it was alcohol. We have no way of knowing, but this idea that people have been so cavalier, some of our callers, is concerning because it's not something that we would necessarily tolerate or anyone would tolerate if it was in the course of regular business in person. And it certainly hasn't been my choice to single out this person, nor was it my desire to spend over an hour tonight going over the Zapruder-like video of them lifting the glass and putting the glass down. I have, I have a mug full of Coke Zero today and I'm, you know, on eggshells every time I put it to my lips to take a sip. The reality of it is, I don't believe this issue would be an issue were it not for the conditions that we're all facing during a pandemic. I have trouble believing that this individual or any individual would consume alcohol or do anything were it an in-person meeting. Yes, you know, it was unprofessional perhaps, but this is partially an issue of, you know, privilege and I hope that the people standing up for this individual will be as kind to the next person who may be caught up in a similar situation. In some ways, I guess how forgiving people are is somewhat encouraging. I don't know if that is necessarily the case or if it's just specifically for this individual because that person's views align with their views. Now, as for me, I understand that mistakes will be made. We're all human. I always say that I don't mind if a person makes a mistake. What I mind is if a person makes the same mistake twice. You know, none of us are free of sin or have not made any type of transgression in our lives. Some may claim that they haven't, but I find that hard to believe. And I'm willing to forgive mistakes. However, my desire, my goal when we were talking about this was not to single out any individual, but as I've stated before, when my colleagues want to bring this issue forward, was that we should look into establishing a clear code of conduct for council, for commissioners, and for individuals that serve the city, that clearly outlines what we expect of them, as well as processes to reprimand, remove, whatever the case may be. I mean, you know, if this happened eight years ago, that wasn't been ample time for us to visit this. Now we have a council, we have an issue, we have this teachable moment, let's do it. Let's figure out what we need to do. You know, I don't know what we expect to get from this, but as I stated before, you know, this is really something. If we were to create a pie chart of how much time some of these DRB-related issues take up of council's time, it would look like Pac-Man eating a very thin slice of pizza. We have a lot of important issues ahead of us, including a DRB-related item that's still before us this evening. And I don't know what necessarily the expectation is from this this evening, but I think we've gone over the issue long enough and we ought to move on.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, you have something to say?
Sure, I'll go ahead. I agree with Mr. Kasakian, the fact that I was shocked at how people felt, so many of the callers felt that, you know, her having that glass of wine or whatever it was was not a big deal. You know, whether it was wine or diluted drink, as I think was described last week, the perception was unacceptable and it was an unfortunate decision that was made by this commissioner. You know, it's clear that this action regarding the consumption of this drink, whatever it was, has caused concern, it's caused embarrassment, and tonight I think we heard from our callers anger and disgust for the public, for her colleagues, for city staff, and for council members. You know, it's not just Mr. Brotman that is being perceived or that she is, should apologize to, it's to all of us. It's to staff, it's to council, it's to the public, it's not just him. However, you know, she wrote somewhat of an apology and she has assured us that she's not going to, it's not going to happen again. You know, I come from the field of education and I look at this as a teaching moment, a learning moment. And I hope that all the commissioners that have been appointed, all the board members that we've appointed are listening and taking everything that was said tonight into their heads and they are careful when they make decisions about perception, because that's what we're talking about, it's the perception. You know, some people are saying she was drunk, some are saying, oh, she just had this or that. No, nobody really, do we really know? And so it's the perception that is so harmful, so hurtful, so disturbing. And so as I said, you know, this was a, hopefully, a one-time decision that she made. I hope she doesn't make that decision again. I hope she's learned from this. And so I would, you know, I am, I'm not going to ask for her resignation. I'm, you know, if, I even laugh at the fact that we would need to have a, some sort of a written ordinance or manual that commissioners and elected officials can't drink while they're at meetings making decisions. That's kind of a common sense. I mean, that is a common sense idea. We just, I mean, we just wouldn't think of it. I would, I wouldn't think of it. I wouldn't think of doing it, of sitting here with a glass of wine and trying to make decisions. So I think we all have to make sure that when we are in public and when we are in meetings, especially when we're here on television making these very important decisions. And this goes for every single civil service, planning commission, every single commission, that we remember that perception is so important and to make the right decision and do the right thing, so that you don't embarrass yourself, you don't embarrass the person, the council member that appointed you, you don't embarrass staff. Do you know how, I'm sure it was very difficult for staff to bring this forward. And you don't embarrass the community. So with that, I would say, let's, let's look at this as a lesson, a teaching moment, and move on. We've spent way too much time and I think the fact that there were so many callers just made this issue even bigger. You know, if there would have been two or three callers, we could have talked about this and gotten through this, but it was just blown up by 60 callers that I think were absolutely overdone. But, so anyway, that's my opinion and I'm ready to move on from here.
Thank you, Ms. Devine.
And Mr. Najarian, I respect everything that you said and I thank you for your comments and Mr. Brotman as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, Ms. Mr. Najarian, one second, few words I have to say. This went too far. Fifty-seven people spoke and two people, they tried to speak, but they were not able to express themselves because of the phone problem or whatever the problem was. This issue is very simple, in my opinion. It's basically few questions. The question is, did the commissioner drink during the meeting? That's the first thing, because it's, the way it has been written, there is a letter I have in front of me and it says, "My dear husband gave me a wine glass." So it's not clear whether there is a drink and she drank that wine. And the second question, as I said, I, everybody can speak about the issue for minutes and hours, but the second question is, is not, nobody questioned whether she is a good commissioner, is she knowledgeable? Nobody raised these issues. The second question, that was the first, did she drink? The second question, is it wrong during a meeting that there are projects in front of the person where the client or the owner of the project, by being an engineer, I worked on projects, a project comes in front of the commissioner or city council members, they spend thousands of dollars. And when we say, go back and change this and change that, it takes months. They bought the land? I don't know, mostly they buy based on finances. They go to the bank, they get money, they pay interest, and while they are in process of doing this, they have to still, they have to pay the interest on the land and the money they borrowed and the hope that they have something they're going to create for themselves or where they will reside with their kids, or they're going to rent it out. So this is very important. I mean, I don't know the project that well, what happened, but I'm just expressing myself. The person brings a project because I did this in the past and to send it back, it causes so much problem for the designer, for the owner, for the architect and everybody else. So it should not be taken lightly. This design review board is very serious commission. I know people, they, they were, we had projects, they were, for last six years, they were going back and forth, back and forth, they were two young people that were in front of us, that they were, they were crying because their hope and understanding that they're new family members and they were going to have kids and whatever. And they spend money, they hope, and the building they want, they want to go inside a new building. And so it's important. So again, I want to repeat what I said. Did she drink? That's the issue. How good the person is, how her knowledge is, that's irrelevant, in my opinion. And what she did, is it wrong? And did she apologize for it? And it would go further and this would come to an end. I don't see it in the letter even. It does not clear say that. Did not, you know, acknowledge that something happened. I didn't know this was going to go this far. I mean, I mean, where we went is ridiculous. I didn't want to be in this position when I am now. However, we have to, or the person should accept the fact and express her regrets and that would be it for me. But as I said, I feel so bad that we went this far, because when people, they come and say how nice she is, I understand. I have no doubt, after listening to forty-some person saying she's a nice person, I'm definitely, I know she's a nice person, but that was not the issue. I was hoping people, they will concentrate on the issue, but on comment part of our project, the matter, that people, they have to come forward and comment, I don't have the authority to tell them, stay on the subject. No, that's, that's not the subject matter that we have to discuss. That's why I think too far. Now, Councilmember Najarian.
Okay, let me see if I can bring this to a conclusion. First off, to Mr. Brotman, I had no idea about any disability. Ms. Smith has. I have not spoken to Ms. Smith except for her appearance before one city council meeting and I definitely in my remarks did not say she was inebriated. I did not cross that line. So I'd like to make, let's start with an easy one. I'd like to make a motion, setting a policy of the city council that drinking an alcoholic beverage in a board, commission or council meeting is wrong.
Why, why not include that in a general code of conduct that would cover other issues?
I mean, it's almost a joke. It's almost a joke to say, we have to say that drinking alcohol during a meeting is a joke. But for this particular, I don't want to continue this item. I'd like to, and when I started, it was my intention to just do two things, not talk about any punishment, any removal, any reprimand, any censure. I'm not here to discuss that. I want the council to state that drinking an alcoholic beverage during a board, commission or council meeting is unacceptable conduct. That's my motion.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Councilmember Divine is seconding.
I'll second it.
Okay.
If, if it has to be spelled out that way, then let it be. So be it.
Mr. Najarian, repeat, what was the motion again? I'm sorry.
That drinking an alcoholic beverage by a board member or council member in a board, commission or city council meeting is unacceptable conduct.
I mean, is not clear that?
This is where we are today, Mr. Mayor. I think we have to go through this.
All right.
And uh, and then get to your second question that you would like.
We have a motion and we have uh, seconded by Ms. Paula Divine. Can I call a roll call, please?
Councilmember, uh, Brotman?
I am going to abstain because I think this whole exercise is completely absurd. Um, if you wanna do a code of conduct, I'd be happy to work on that, but this is just a pointless exercise. So I abstain.
Councilmember Divine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajun?
Yes.
My second motion is a finding that during the January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one DRB meeting, Ms. Smith drank an alcoholic beverage. That's my motion. And that's why I hit the Zapruder tape, so people would see what I was talking about.
That where this is going, Mr. Najarian?
Well, okay, so there's no second? No one saw her drinking an alcoholic beverage?
No, it's not, I think they are not clear to us what we are voting at.
Just two things, Mr. Mayor. We did the first one, drinking in a meeting is wrong. The second one is that during that January fourteenth meeting, Ms. Smith drank an alcoholic beverage.
I thought we accepted that she drank?
No, no, we just did part one. This is part two.
All right, I second it, but uh, all right, I second that. No roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Again, I will abstain because uh, I don't wanna play this game.
Councilmember Divine?
I abstain, I don't have any idea. She's, went, we've heard different things.
Councilmember Kusakian?
I don't, I don't know what she was drinking, so the answer is no. I, I don't think that's been substantiated clearly and without uh, uh, Mr. Najarian, you are the attorney, a shred, uh, beyond.
Well, it was a statement to get in, interests that she told Mr. Brotman and Mr. Brotman said she drank a wine spritzer.
I suppose that's Mr., that's what Mr. Brotman says. I don't know it, so I cannot conclusively say whether that person did or not.
All right.
Certainly, the glass that they were using was one that's normally used for those beverages, but I don't see the point of this. So no.
Okay.
As I take a sip from my coffee mug.
I mean, we don't have the votes, so obviously this is going nowhere.
Well, continue, continue the roll call, please.
Councilmember Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajun?
Yes, but there is no.
Item passes two to one.
Oh.
Now, if I may, uh, actually that's, that wouldn't be correct. I mean, Mr., uh, the abstain, abstain votes count towards the form.
Abstention counts as a no.
They only wouldn't count if they were conflicted, for example, um, but they count in a normal, in a normal vote.
Okay, council.
All right. Okay.
Don't let your eyes deceive you.
What's next now?
There are no further uh, motions. We can go to the next item on the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's go to the next item. Thank you, all those who came forward, spoke on this issue. Uh, next, next, next item.
Next item is nine hearing, nine A Community Development regarding public hearing on appeal of Design Review Board case number PDR two zero zero five, four nine seven six, located at two nine four one dash two nine four three Honolulu Avenue. One, motion to sustain the Design Review Board decision to approve the Design Review Board application with conditions. Two, motion to continue directing city attorney to draft finding supporting denial of the Design Review Board application. And three, motion to remand the case to the Design Review Board for further consideration.
Okay, I guess, uh, Mr. Garcia and the council members, uh, one of the subcontractors of the owner of the project gave me money, so I have to recuse myself. I can't stay on this meeting. Is that right, Mr. Garcia?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, correct. And just to, to clarify, um, I think you're referring to a campaign contribution that received from one, one of the applicants, uh, subconsultants, which would conflict you out on this, this matter. Yes, sir.
Okay. Not the owner of the project, but a subcontractor that I did not know is part of this. That's why I leave the meeting and I will wait in my office, mayor's office, until this part of the uh, issue, this issue come to a conclusion. I will return it. Thank you. I don't know who's the.
Uh, Mr. Kusakian, uh, Councilmember Kusakian is the mayor pro tem.
Okay, Mr. Kusakian, you're running the uh, this, this meeting.
Great, thank you. So, um, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, um, do we just go straight to staff presentation? Is that what you would like to do?
Yes.
I'm a part of this last time. I don't know what, how much of the presentation needs to be gone over again and where we are at this juncture. So if you can give us some direction as to how to proceed. I know that there was a desire by the applicant to move this and so here we are.
Correct. Uh, count, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, I don't believe there was a presentation or even the hearing really opened uh, because of the conflict issues that was continued to this meeting. So it would be appropriate to have staff make a presentation and then hear from the appellant uh, and then the applicant and then the speakers and then rebuttal by both applicant and appellant. Uh, certainly within your, once we get to the, the applicant or the appellant, the applicant, it's, it's uh, your jurisdiction to set the time parameters for that. Uh, the only other thing I would, I would note for all the council members, if you recall, we have, we do have the organizational disclosure requirements. They don't conflict you out, but if you do belong to any of the organizations that are, make, make up the appellant group, uh, it would be appropriate at this time to disclose that as well as to disclose any ex-party communications you had either with the applicant or the appellant's team.
Uh, I am a member of the Verdugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association.
Anyone else want to uh, state their, any affiliation or membership in any homeowner group or association?
No.
Okay. Um, without uh, any other comments from my colleagues, uh, let's get into the staff report. Um, and we'll open up this public hearing at ten oh three.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Kusakian, Member of City Council. I'm gonna turn it over to Milka Toledo, our senior planner, for the presentation on the side.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, members of city staff. Um, I have a presentation, so I'm going to share my screen. Okay. So, the hearing is an appeal of a decision made by the Design Review Board on July twenty-third, twenty twenty. The project involves the demolition of the existing approximately four thousand six hundred square foot, two-story commercial building and a parking lot, um, in conjunction with the construction of a new three-story eighteen-unit, eighteen thousand four hundred and ninety-three square foot, multifamily residential, density bonus, affordable housing development over a twenty-three space semi-submarine parking garage. The lot is thirteen thousand two hundred and ninety-nine square feet. The zone is C-one neighborhood commercial and the project has approximately a hundred feet of frontage along Honolulu Avenue. And the project location being that it's in the C-one zone, the R twelve fifty standards would apply in this case, which allow multiple residential dwelling units in compliance with the R twelve fifty standards. And according to zoning code, a conditional use permit would be required for commercial uses on the ground floor and that was approved as outlined in the timeline in your staff report. Briefly just go through the history. So again, on, on January ninth of twenty twenty, the um, planning hearing officer approved the conditional, or actually it was a hearing um, for the conditional use permit for again residential uses on the ground floor and the case was approved with conditions. On the fourteenth of February twenty twenty, the director of CDD approved a density bonus uh, housing plan and findings for three concessions because at least fifteen percent of the base number of the units were reserved for very low-income households. As part of the entitlement process, the Design Review Board heard the case on July twenty-third of twenty twenty. Um, the case at that time uh, was approved by the Design Review Board with conditions. Subsequently, on August seventh, uh, the case was appealed by Grant Michaels and um, co-appellants representing neighborhood associations. And on the nineteenth of this year, the case was continued and here we are today. So, again, the project involves a density bonus and affordability. But again, that was already approved by the director um, prior to the DRB meeting. The density bonus allowed fourteen units by rights. They are applying a thirteen, a base density for the project for purposes of calculating the density bonus at thirty-five percent, which allows them an additional five units. There's a total of eighteen units being proposed for the project. Uh, three of those units will be reserved for very low-income household. As part of the density bonus, there were three concessions approved. And as part of those concessions, um, that includes and to increase the maximum allowed floor area ratio to one point four, to increase the maximum height and number of stories to forty-two feet, three inches and three stories and to reduce the required number of parking spaces. Uh, this, again, is just to show the site and context. Uh, again, it's developed with a commercial building and associated parking. Again, this is for reference purposes, so the subject site is adjacent to commercial uses and uh, to the, that would be to the west, to the east and across the street to the south. And then to the north, there are residential uses across the alley. You do have in your packet the plans, so I don't go into too much detail. This is the site plan, um, again, the garage plan, floor plans, roof plan, um, elevations, which I will allude to a little bit further in the presentation as it relates to some of the conditions that were made. I'll just highlight really quick, this would be, if you can see my cursor, but this is the front elevation facing Honolulu Avenue. Again, more views of the building and the landscape plan. And so we'll jump into what occurred on July twenty-third.
May I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Milka, have, have these uh, drawings or colors or designs changed in any way since we last saw it three weeks ago?
No, they have not.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so at that time, the three board members, um, that the project could be approved with clear specific conditions. And those conditions would involve to modify the massing and enhance the design of the building without compromising the approved density bonus concessions. We did at that time have, um, one of the members from our city attorney staff present, who also spoke at the hearing, again, uh, to emphasize that point, that whatever decision was made by the board, again, it could not conflict with or compromise those approved concessions or the density that was approved for the project. Um, one of the board members believed that the project, um, should be returned for redesign because it did not consider the North Glendale Community Plan. It did not consider the mass and design and it did not consider context. I, um, it's, I mentioned in your staff report, but again, the part of decision is included, which else, which mentioned who made the motion, who seconded the motion. Um, and there was one absent, however, board, at that time, the one board member, uh, Arzumani, and she, she provided her comments and then after her comments and when, during the board's deliberation, she left the meeting prior to voting on the project. So that is noted. Um, I don't wanna go into much detail regarding the conditions. Again, they're outlined in your report. Um, and I will go through some of them that, um, kinda are the main points as to how the board addressed the massing and the design of the project. So I will go through these. If you do have questions though, please let me know. So the boards, the basis of the appeal. Um, the appeal of the DRB's decision was again filed by the neighborhood associations repres, representatives, representatives, um, on the following basis. That there was a violation of a specific provision of law, that the DRB failed to fulfill a mandatory duty by a provision of law and that evidence before the board was insufficient or inadequate to support its actions, determination or ruling or any specific finding and support thereof. Um, so in regards to the first one, the DRB disregarded, disregarded section thirty forty-seven point four oh four, where the reviewer thought ensure that all projects are consistent with the adopted community plans and in this case, the North Glendale Community Plan. So the appellants alleged that the board did not consider the plan. Uh, the DRB failed to fulfill a mandatory duty under section thirty forty-seven point oh one oh, which is to discourage poor exterior design, um, appearance and inferior quality, which are likely to depreciate the local envi, environment surrounding area. Again, in this case, because of the project's mass, scale and design not being compatible with the neighborhood. And that the DRB had insufficient or inadequate evidence to approve the project um, because the project did not present findings and the DRB did not ensure that the project is consistent with the North Glendale Community Plan. The findings being outlined in thirty forty-seven point oh, uh, point four oh four. Staff's response to the appeal. Couple of things, the plan, or in this case, the intent of uh, the North Glendale Community Plan, the design guidelines to, it serves as a guide to help development within city neighborhoods. New development, this is again what's mentioned in the plan, that even though it's larger than the existing context, it should relate to existing adjacent buildings uh, by way of their proportions, transition and design. by way of their proportions, transition and design features. So in this case, staff's response is that the project is consistent and considers the North Glendale Community Plan and the design guidelines. And the building's mass and scale was or has been, again, with the conditions imposed, it would help reduce further the mass and scale and articulate the building. How? Through its recessed staggered forms, through the breaks in roof, walls, fenestration patterns, varied cladding materials and color palette. And that's how you achieve an articulated building. And again, applying these features helps avoid the long horizontal boxy looking facade or of a building and it creates an interesting design. Moving along regarding staff's response to the appeal. Again, the board thought that and believed that by imposing the conditions that they did, that the mass and scale would be addressed even further. How? By lowering the building elevation, especially a street level. Redesign the upper level at the four building corners. Again, the goal of to reduce mass and scale and provide further articulation to the roof line by lowering the parapet height on some of the, on the balconies to introduce roof forms, push back walls at balconies, to remove the trellis away from the street or away from the front facade and to introduce tall landscaping adjacent to the rear wall next to the alley. So the North Glendale Community Plan and Design Guidelines are in place to serve as a guide to neighborhood development. And also new projects, again, that do apply and are consistent with the guidelines should respect but not copy adjacent development. And clearly that's evident through the design that's presented. And conditions, again, they vary from site to site. So some solutions may work for some, others may not. But again, keeping in mind the spirit and intent of the guidelines is the key. The majority of, of the board did agree that the design was, again, with the conditions imposed, would be appropriate in scale and articulation. They believe that it was, the design was well executed, complementing the neighborhood. Um, that the building proposed high quality materials. Um, again, consistent with the identified modern architecture. And that the landscaping integrated and complemented the building design and the neighborhood. Site planning was considered by the board as well as the landscaping, the open space, mass and scale and design details. In addition, that was also presented to the board, to the board in the staff report. Again, staff reviewed the site planning, mass, scale and the design. Um, and also included suggested conditions to, for the board to consider as well. So ultimately, the DR, the majority of the DRB determined that as condition, the project was compatible with the surrounding neighborhood context. So staff's recommendation is to sustain the approval of the designer review board. Subject to those conditions that the board imposed on the project as outlined in the record of decision of the July 23rd, 2020, ERB meeting. That concludes my presentation. I tried to keep it as short and simple as possible.
Do my colleagues have questions of staff?
I have a question.
Councilmember Najarian.
Milka, so there's, there's 14 conditions, correct? Or 15, 14 plus one?
Right.
How, how do we know in the end, what that building is going to look like before it's actually constructed? How, how do we know that all those conditions, if they're specific enough, some of them are a little bit loosey goosey, but that's my architectural term, by the way. How do we know that they are going to be implemented to a, a degree that's satisfactory to the DRB? Because they're the ones that impose the conditions before it's built.
That's an excellent question, Councilmember Najarian. So what typically occurs if there are conditions that are imposed by the board? And in like in this case, they approved it with conditions. What typically happens, they're basically delegating staff. In this case, I'm, in this case, I'm the case planner and I work closely with our design staff. Um, in this case, I worked closely with Chris Segardi. And we will review the the plans that are submitted in the future and verify that those conditions of approval were properly executed on plan. And that again, they meet the spirit and intent and exactly what the board was intending to have proposed for the project. So that step has not taken place. Before you today are the plans that were originally reviewed by the DRB. And that was appealed and that's why those plans are before you today.
Is there anything subjective in those conditions that might mean something different to you than it meant to DRB that it would mean to council? That would mean to the designer? I think that, I'm concerned that there's not a, a clear, objective condition like lower the roof two feet that everyone can agree on. Yes, that condition was met. Yes, 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 yes. Okay. Then this is, this is what was intended.
Well, the conditions, in my professional opinion, appear to be pretty direct and straightforward. If there was any questions as to, or any ambiguity potentially, or staff may feel that there was some ambiguity, it would have been most likely presented to the DRB at that time to, for example, clarify how much lower you would like the building to be reduced, et cetera, et cetera. But again, it, it's, it appears that all, again, in my professional opinion, it appears that the 15 conditions and the one consideration were pretty specific and direct to the point that the DRB felt comfortable enough delegating staff to determine that those conditions are properly executed on plan prior to moving forward with the project.
That's it? Councilmember Najarian? Okay, thank you. Any of my other colleagues have questions?
I don't have any questions now.
All right, now.
Okay. So with that, I think we ought to move to, uh, and, and let me ask our legal counsel or the city attorney, who would customarily, should we have? I believe it's the appellant that should go first.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor Protem, because of the, the burden of proof rests with the appellant.
So with that, we have, I believe, Grant Michaels, you are representing the appellant side, correct? Do you have anyone else that is going to speak in addition to you or are you presenting entirely as the appellant?
I'm presenting for all of the appellants.
Okay. How much time do you believe you need to state your case, considering the hour?
Um, I will try to finish in 10 minutes.
Um, all right. I will give you 10 plus some change. We'll give you some grace or added time like they do in soccer or football. So with that, if the city clerk could please start the timer and Mr. Michaels, you may begin.
Absolutely.
Presentation, would like to share my screen. Good evening, Mayor Protem, council and staff. I am representing the neighborhood associations that brought forth this appeal. The basis of the appeal is that the DRB did not meet the burden of proof that this project was consisted with, or consistent with the North Glendale Community Plan. The design exacerbates the SB 1818 concessions, creating a monumental boxy appearance. A large number of conditions will present a final design that we don't know how will be expressed. The changes to the roof form, building heights that are ambiguous, we believe would have been better served to have the project come back for redesign and review by the DRB for a final approval. Modern design does not relate to the existing neighborhood context through proportion, transition, design features. And SB 1818 projects are not exempt from design standards. We are not challenging the SB 1818 concessions or the granting of the variance for residential on the ground floor. We do acknowledge that the Verdugo Village neighborhood that this is in is a commercial zone. And an SB 1818 project is appropriate based on the zoning. This is a view from Honolulu, looking to the east, of which you see what was the Moss Market under construction, the little blue tip of what is the, of what was Leo's Sports Bar and the condominium project at the corner. We do want to see that this project fits within the neighborhood context. As far as building facades being articulated to portray a domestic scale, this is a image of the condominium project at the corner of Honolulu and Ramsdale. You can see that the roof forms, the building forms for the second, first story of the residential vary not only horizontally, but also vertically, giving this a 3D appearance that appears residential. This is a image here showing the Moss Market, a better image of the existing building there and further to the left, the residential stories or the residential project. With this, the bonuses for SB 1818, if we were to take, go through the exercise and remove those bonuses of that additional third story, that would result in a project that is 32 feet in height in the C1 zone, where it has a maximum of 25 feet as its maximum height. So with this, the SB 1818 density bonuses are being used to create a project that if removed, would not meet the existing zoning. Mass and scale. The staff report does go ahead and, and point out that there are variations in the facades that avoid a blank horizontal facade. Looking at the facade vertically, it does not address any type of variation between the different stories. The second and third story have the identical footprint. The first story is only marginally larger due to the balconies being at the ground level. The image here shown as the south view and the image of the existing building. If you can imagine that this building would now be 43 feet above the street level, that we are considering incompatible in mass and scale with the surrounding C1 neighborhood with a limit of 25 feet. We do not believe that there are appropriate transitions, variations in mass, a reduction in mass at the upper stories that would proportion this project and make it compatible with the existing neighborhood. These are images of the other residential condominium project to, on Ramsdale, south of Honolulu, which further shows a three dimensional design. The roof forms, the first and second stories, there are breaks in the massing, both vertically as well as horizontally. In looking at the appearance from the street, the first image in the upper left, which is obscured by trees, is the image of that building on Ramsdale. It is set further down in the grading and the building itself is obscured by those trees. This building would be significantly taller and the third story mass would be excessive and monumental in its appearance. The conditions, we do not believe that the large number of conditions, specifically the ambiguous reduction in height and modification of the roof form would clearly identify what the design, what the final design would look like and would be determined to be compatible with the neighborhood. At the DRB hearing, we made the suggestion to push the building elevation lower, which would eliminate the need for a lift or an extensive ramp as well as change from a flat mansard style roof to a pitched roof line, which would reduce the visible mass of the project. The two conditions that were included do not completely clarify what exactly the building project will look like when it is completed. The materials, this has a palette that employs geometric patterns, gold architectural colors, gray, silver and brown. Looking at the North Glendale Community Plan, there is a desire in that plan to use natural materials and a more rustic, natural palette. Looking at this project, there is a significant amount of exposed concrete and CMU wall that is incorporated in the project design. We do not consider the materials to be compatible with the North Glendale Community Plan. A landscape design, it does go ahead and require or ask that all landscaping be planted. Given that the entire lot is going to be excavated and all of the planting at the rear providing a buffer to the residential neighborhood is going to be in planters. We are unclear of what plantings will be made and how tall that will grow. To see if it would adequately, adequately provide a buffer between this project and the residential neighborhood as it was planned in the staff report. In conclusion, we find that this project is not compatible with North Glendale Community Plan or the design guidelines. DRB failed in its duties to discourage poor design and appearance, looking at the large amount of concrete and CMU wall. The North Glendale Community Plan looked to enhance our neighborhood. The specifics of the Verdugo City neighborhood were to enhance that area and make it more of a pedestrian area, looking to extend and expand upon what would be the Honolulu Shopping Village area. The two pictures above, one is the proposed project. The other is the, an image taken from the North Glendale Community Plan of an example of what a multifamily project should look like. With variations in roof form, variation in mass for the first and second story. We are proposing that this project looks very monumental, very boxy. There is no undulation or proportional transition, looking at this project vertically. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Mr. City Clerk, how much time did Mr. Michaels use?
He has, uh, there's only 26 minutes left, two seconds left, sorry, yes.
All right, perfect, right on time. Um, all right, uh, is the applicant, Mr. Nazarian and Mr. Basmaji, and I believe who will be speaking for the applicant? who will be speaking for the applicant?
Yeah, Karo Nazarian is here, I can hear you.
Okay, Mr. Nazarian, how much time will you need to end your, and the end or Mr. Busmogian, between the two?
15 or maximum 20 minutes.
We try to keep it to 15?
I will try.
Okay.
I'll need a couple of minutes already.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, this is Karo Nazarian, the designer of the project. Just I want to bring to your attention that this project in front of you is the result of the very close cooperation with the design studio and the planner of the project, which it took about seven to eight months back and forth because they were very sensitive to this project, and they gave few times comments, and we did change the project and went back to the, you know, the for final submission, which I believe that the city staff, the design studio group, and the planners, they are professionals knowledgeable for the city ordinances. And they, you know, they find this project consistent with the zoning planning and the community plan. Most of the projects, residential projects, it requires the minimum of five feet set, the side setback for the first floor, eight feet second, and 11 feet on the third floor. Because I believe to the quality of life that we want to bring for the residents of this building, I keep large side setbacks from just the ground floor and providing a minimum 10 feet setback where the five feet minimum is required, eight feet average. By giving, because taking in consideration with adjusted properties in the future they build, I don't want to have a building 10 feet from the adjusted buildings. So this design vertically, and the time has been changed. The design is going more to the post-modern, contemporary design. So that is the verticality, but the articulation of this project, it's good enough. And if you see as the Milka presented, the board decision later dated July 23, 2020, it confirmed that this project is consistent with the neighborhood, and it's consistent with the community plan and the zoning ordinances, and we don't ask any variance. Just by having SB 1818, that is a state law. By using the SB 1818, we are fulfilling the wish of the state to provide affordable housing for the residents of Glendale. And on the AT unit project, we are providing three affordable housing. The applicant excuse, or you know, the applicant reason to appeal, you know, to appeal the project, it's not consistent with the community plan, which I believe more to the city staff and the design studio, which they find fully compatible, you know, compliance with the community plan. And this project is providing three affordable units, high quality, and for the developer. Site planning, it's, the project is providing a large side setbacks around floor, around ground floor where a five feet minimum, eight feet average, we are providing 11 feet and 15 feet nine inches average. And I went through the conditions. I don't know, I already did change my plans. I lowered the building path to eliminate the lift or the ramp. On the design review board, they didn't give me any number, lower one feet or two feet, whatever. Just they asked to lower to eliminate the lift or the ramp, which already I did. I think that maybe it has been misplaced, the plans that I submitted with all these revisions. The conditions that I have respond to the concerns, Najarian, there is no such a condition that it's, it will give me hard time not to provide it. The building, it has been lowered, redesigned the upper level roof, building corners. The corners already, we changed the roof line on the four corners of the building, of top of the balconies. We already, we did revise our plans based on all these comments. And that vertical landscaping, it was concerned once to, was to hide that north property line wall, which is tall wall on the alley side, to cover with the landscaping, which already that has been done too. So just, and even to provide the affordable housing, the cost of the construction, it's a major issue. And to provide affordability for the residents of the Glendale, on the design issue, we considered the cost of construction, not to go to a design very extensive, but very acceptable, very reasonable, and very popular design on this case. I don't have anything else to add. If you have any question, I will be more than happy to ask.
Can we please stop the time so it doesn't take away anything from Mr. Busmogian's time? Do any of my colleagues have any questions of Mr. Nazarian, Councilmember Najarian?
So I'm not sure I heard correctly. Did Mr. Nazarian say he has revised plans and drawings that haven't been presented to us or they didn't get to Milka? I'm not sure if I understood.
Yes, I did. But because of explosive installation, you know, of meeting online, through the internet, you know, on the website, maybe it has been placed, but already I did, you know, even tomorrow I can send, resend it for Milka, that's true.
Yeah, no, we can't do it tomorrow, but if he's done revised plans that incorporate those conditions, I'd like to see them.
Does, thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Does staff have a response for Councilmember Najarian's inquiry?
Well, the applicant has not submitted plans to staff. I mean, I have not received anything as of today.
Okay. All right, moving on. Are there any other questions from either of my colleagues? Councilmember Brotman or Councilmember Dubois?
Not right now, thanks.
Okay. With that, Mr. Nazarian, is there anything else that you wish to add? Before we turn it over to Mr. Busmogian.
What to add? But yeah, the plans, it has been revised already. I don't want to contradict Milka, but already I did revise plans, and if it's revised, then it means that I revised it to resubmit for this, not even this one, on the June, on the January 19 hearing. But it's okay, but it's not a major condition. And it won't affect much the smaller building.
Okay, Mr. Busmogian, the floor is yours. Will the clerk please resume the timer?
Thank you very much. Greetings. Good evening. I know it's getting late, so I'll try to keep my comments brief. Bought this property several years ago. It's been three plus years in the making to get to this point. The plans that were presented were really the residual effect of my architect working with staff. I gave him ultimate latitude and flexibility to really, you know, work within the guidelines and design recommendations so that we can come to a place that were relevant and consistent. I believe we have that. I believe this is a beautiful project that's not only going to enhance the neighborhood at its present state with the DRB conditions. Prior to that, I felt that way, even more so softening it up a little bit with the recommendations. I would say rest assured that we will comply at that level, and we will make sure that that happened. We have no choice but to do that, and we're willing, and you know, would like to make sure that it happens. You know, we had a lot of options when purchasing this property, could make it a bar and/or some other variations of businesses that would be, you know, certainly profitable. This was a decision that we made personally as a family. I'm not some, you know, big-time developer. This was, you know, certainly an opportunity that came up that we felt compelled to jump on. And, you know, after reviewing a number of different options for what would make sense for this site and the fact that as a leading employer in the Glendale community, seeing how difficult it was for residents to, you know, find affordable housing, felt like this could be a win-win. Even with all the concessions, we're giving three units at the benefit of building one with, you know, so this isn't, you know, something that we're counting pennies on, although it's gotten very expensive. And the holding costs at three years have become astronomical. From the time that we've gotten this approved to the, you know, where we are today, the seven, eight-month delay with COVID has been catastrophic. And any other delays would be even worse than that. So what I'm hoping for is your support to be able to move forward with what I believe makes, you know, total sense. And after understanding the consumer demand that exists for, you know, trendy and, you know, the desire of younger families to be able to move into some of these, you know, more contemporary approaches, it made total sense. You know, the pictures that were shown comparing, you know, our plans versus what was there, I think only helps our case. I can't imagine anybody wanting to, you know, pick the, you know, other option. But hey, everyone's entitled to their, you know, perspective of style, and I respect that. I would appreciate your support as we've received from staff. It's taken a while, but we've gotten to a good place. And, you know, we're three years in, and we're excited to be able to move forward and get this built. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Is this pretty much everyone that's late to speak? We had the appellant, we've had the applicant, and the client.
Mayor Protem.
What do my colleagues, what do my colleagues wish to do at this point? Who wants to ask questions? Who has comments?
Phone calls if we got any.
Mayor Protem, we do have a phone call. Yes, we do have one.
Okay, sure. Let's go to the phone lines.
How many minutes would you like to give them?
Given the hour, we'll give them two minutes. I think that should suffice.
Susan Bolin, you're live. Susan, go ahead.
Hi, hello, everybody. My name is Susan Bolin, and I'm speaking as a resident who served on the advisory committee of the North Glendale Community Plan. And as a committee, we walked the streets of North Glendale and Montrose looking at design elements and zoning and worked tirelessly for months in formulating a plan that respected our local history and desire to remain a low-scale community. I was the only resident who actually wrote portions of the plan itself with planner Laura Stotler, and so I know it very well. When the committee outlined our vision for Verdugo City Village Center District, we saw a revitalization on Honolulu that connected the Montrose Shopping Park with Historic Rock Haven and the business area between Locust Senate and Ramsdale Avenues. We saw the walkable neighborhood continuing to have small retail and service establishments and keeping with the historic development of the area. It was critical to the committee that infill projects be similar in design so that they didn't seem out of character with the existing neighborhood. It was also vital that transitions between residences and businesses be done in a respectful manner. The most important topic that the committee discussed was neighborhood compatibility. Compatibility and how new buildings are fit into the existing context with their design and use of materials, but also compatible in their mass and scale as compared to adjacent development. This project takes none of this into account. The three stories would tower over the one and two-level businesses to the east, west, and south. The single-story homes to the north would look directly at the side of this building instead of the beautiful mountains. The boxy design does not follow the topography, like the plan says, with appropriate setbacks or break up the massing adequately. The modern materials and colors do not mimic nor complement any of the existing traditional design elements as seen in the rest of the street shown by Grant Michaels. I could cite specific language in the comprehensive design guidelines and how this project doesn't conform with the North Glendale plan, but you get the idea. Do not let this building set precedent for future development in Verdugo City. We're not looking for trendy. We're looking for infill that is compatible. Council, please sustain this appeal and send the project back for redesign. Thank you so much for staying with us this whole time.
All right, thank you. Any other callers?
There is one more caller.
All right, please put them on.
Catherine Yurka, you're live. Catherine?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and for your patience. I'll be brief. I just wanted to say that it seemed to me fairly obvious from the images that Grant used in his presentation that the project really can't be said to meet the contours of the North Glendale Community Plan. I understand what the owner was saying about design being subjective, and he sort of favors this style versus others, but that's precisely why community plans are so important, because they guide development appropriate and compatible with the existing fabric of the neighborhood. I did want to suggest, I mean, one of my outgoing concerns, whatever you decide to do with this project, and I don't want you to reject it, I simply want you to return it to the DRB for a redesign to make it more compatible, that I hope you'll figure out how a project that has no variation in height or setbacks from first to second or second to third stories, that is so boxy, that has a prominent elevation that will be angled toward Honolulu and very visible, could possibly read as a giant wall with both our design guidelines in place and the community plan. I just want to prevent staff from taking these projects from getting here in the first place. One red flag for me is it appears that SB 1818 concessions are just granted by the Director of Community Development, and that may happen in the absence of any consideration about design and how to kind of incorporate it into the guidelines and the community plan. I would really ask council to request a report about how other small cities such as Pasadena and Burbank are able to exact higher design standards in affordable housing projects than Glendale is at present, even though they're subject to the same state laws.
Thank you, Ms. Yurka. Unfortunately, you're two minutes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you. Any other callers?
Mayor Protem, no more callers.
Thank you. All right, I'll go to my colleagues.
Mr. Mayor Protem, it would be appropriate to allow, and I don't know, it's not maybe not necessary, but allow the applicant and the appellant a few, a couple of minutes of rebuttal time.
Sure, absolutely. Mr. Michaels, and thank you, Mr. Garcia, for reminding me of that at this late hour. Mr. Michaels, how much time would you need to? I'll give you five minutes. Would that be adequate for you to respond?
Five minutes should be adequate.
Okay.
First, let me go ahead and again reiterate what we are not challenging. We do contend that this area is appropriate for a SB 1818 project, and we appreciate the owner's willingness to do that type of project in our neighborhood. That said, we do want it to be compatible. And looking specifically at that, for this design to be compatible without those density bonuses, a two-story project would still be subject to that 25-foot maximum height in the C1 zone. With this project going up to 43 feet, not excluding the elevator shaft, which would be three feet on top of that, this project is not compatible based on the height, and that is a concern to us. The mass and scale, particularly that the North Glendale Community Plan specifically says that as a says that as a building goes up, the mass of the upper stories should be set further back. This project does not meet that condition from the North Glendale Community Plan. It does go ahead and articulate that horizontally, there are breaks in the facade. Vertically, there are no breaks in the facade. That is something that we consider incompatible with the North Glendale Community Plan.
I agree.
The conditions, one of the first conditions to the staff report was the expansion or elimination of the small atrium at the center of this building. The recommendation was to eliminate the atrium in favor of reducing the mass of the building. That condition did not make it into one of the conditions of approval that was approved by the Design Review Board. Again, in the first staff report, it recommended reduction in the mass of this project. We have not seen that. Compared to the examples that were presented, they weren't presented for style. We will not dictate style, but we did present those as an example, both from the North Glendale Community Plan and the relevant block that this project is on of how other projects appear to have a three-dimensional structure. The top stories do step back if a residential appearance. This project appears to be very commercial in a residential design and what it is going forward to do. We do not again see that, or we acknowledge that the architect has said he's made changes based to the height in the roof lines. The suggestion that we had of reducing the parapet height of the roof was for the entire roof line. The condition from DRB to reduce it at the corners, we don't consider acceptable to reduce the overall visible height from Honolulu. Reducing the corners, a still large unknown portion of the building, would still be very tall and very visible. In conclusion, we find this project incompatible based on its design, not based on the SB 1818 concessions. With those concessions removed, again, this design is incompatible in height, mass and scale, and we would like to see this project returned for redesign to come back with a project that does provide affordable housing and is more appropriate with the neighborhood and compatible with North Glendale Community Plan. At the previous council meeting where this was originally scheduled to be heard, Mr. Nazarian said, "Time is money." I agree with it. I would rather, and the community associations would rather see projects be done right, that meet code, where the design guidelines and the community plans are clear and that projects come forward and are clearly compatible with them, meeting those standards so that projects do not have to be appealed, there are not delays. I appreciate there are, there is time and expense on the, on the part of the applicant, but there is also time and expense for the community members. The filing of this appeal and the $2,000 filing fee coming from community organizations was not insignificant for us to raise, just as the seven-month delay is not insignificant for the applicant. We're looking for counsel to review this project and create your own findings. That is what we are looking to hear. We have reviewed this project and we have found it to be incompatible with the North Glendale Community Plan. I can point to the 42-feet height in a 25-foot C1 maximum zone as a finding that is.
Mr. Michaels, thank you so much. Your time is up. I apologize, but I do have to try to run the meeting as timely and as tightly as I can. We're already approaching the 11th hour. I will turn to my colleagues. Any questions? Comments? Don't all speak at once.
I'll, I can make some comments.
All right.
Can we get a, do we get a chance for rebuttal or?
Unfortunately, Mr. Basmagian, the way our hearings are structured is that the person making the appeal has a chance to present, and because you have a chance to respond to it and present your case, they get the last bite at the apple. Unfortunately, that is how we run these hearings.
Understood.
Mr. Brotman?
Yeah, so first of all, I, you know, I appreciate the work Mr. Basmagian and Nazarian put into this. We, you know, certainly welcome and need the housing. I think that area is, is a good area for, for density and appreciate the, the building and the affordable housing units. And I, you know, I also, I'm a finance guy, so I understand the, the issue of, of holding costs and, and I, and I don't want to see that extended further on you. I do have some concerns though with largely the process, somewhat the design, but I guess what I'd say is, you know, the, the DRB, when they went through this, they, they clearly saw that massing was a problem, and that's why they requested conditions, I think, one, three, and seven. So one was about pushing the building down to allow street-level access without requiring that lift or an extensive ramp. There was a condition to redesign the roof line to reduce the sense of massing, and there was number seven had to do with the roof deck trellis, moving it to the back to reduce height. So clearly, they saw that was an issue and had a few conditions to address that. They, they also thought that the entry did not meet the requirements of the North Glendale Community Plan, and that's why they have condition number two, which is about redesigning the front entry to make it more prominent and act as a focal point. And I did look at the North Glendale Community Plan that talks about entries should have, quote, you know, "visible interest" and provide a sense of arrival. So there was clearly a, an understanding that, you know, it didn't quite meet that, those conditions. And then there were other ways that the design didn't conform to the North Glendale Community Plan. There were things about color palette, stucco, the wood siding or the fake wood siding. In addition, the DRB thought that the submission was incomplete. They talked about it lacking an exterior lighting plan, a parkway plan, window plans, details of junctions where the different materials meet, maybe some other things. So the question to me is whether these fixes are appropriately done by staff or they should be done through the public process of the DRB. I, I think that it's the DRB's job to know what they're approving and what it's ultimately going to look like. And I don't think it's possible, given how open-ended some of these conditions are. I think that, you know, staff should insist that these project submissions are complete before they go to the DRB. And so I, in that, in that instance, I, in that case, I think that this should go back to the DRB for a redesign, that should, that it should have originally, and that DRB did not do its job in this case. I have some concerns about the design itself because it's really going to set a new baseline for Verdugo City. I think we have to treat it with special scrutiny, and we should, we should insist on design excellence. I don't want to see us kind of repeat Central Avenue with its massive claustrophobic, blocky designs on Honolulu. I don't want us to, to go down that path. So that's another concern that I have. In any case, I, I do think it should go back to DRB, and I would like to see this project happen, but I, I think that DRB needs to see the result of the, the conditions being worked and, and how that's ultimately going to look, and then make a decision. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Brotman. I'll now turn over going in alphabetical order. We'll go to Councilmember Devine.
That's a fair way to do it, Councilmember Kusakian. I was up to this, I have been up to this site at least four times, beginning from when it first came, before it first came to us and just recently. And I, I feel that this design as it stands right now, the color palette, and, and the mass and the scale is, is very harsh for that location. So I really agree with the Design Review Board that it, it needs to be softened. I know one of the, the board members suggested, suggested river rock on the facade to, to go along with the, the North, the North Glendale architecture. I think that's a good idea. You know, I, I often tease Bradley about modulation and undulation and all of those other, and I noticed that in the west view of this building, we, we have some modulation. And in the east view, we have some, but on the south and the north, well, especially the south, it is a flat wall. It is nothing but a flat wall, and that, that just looks terrible, and I, I would hope that, that something can be done with that particular side of the building. It is going to be exposed. It's a side that will be, will be seen by the, the people that are up there driving around. So I'm going to be consistent, and I have to tell you, when I see 14 conditions, that to me is a red flag. There is something wrong that has to, that has to be changed. So I think that we have to actually look at modifying the mass and improving the design and, and give Design Review Board a chance to see these changes. You know, some of these are very, they're big changes. Push the building down to lower elevation, redesign the front, I mean, it just goes on. The other thing I wanted to say is the color palette is shocking for that location. Everything, every building, every structure in, I think, a mile radius on, on, on that street is, on Honolulu is a beige, a, a neutral color palette. And I know Design Review recommended that, and I am 100% in favor of that. There are three-story structures up there. I mean, there's no denying it. You can't drive up there and not see three-story structures. So I, I don't, I, I don't have a problem with that. What, I'm going to look at some of my other notes here. So I, I guess, I'm just going to make it short. I, I would like to see, to see all of these conditions accomplished. I think it should be remanded to DRB, but Mr. Basmagian, don't panic, and Mr. Nazarian, because number one, the architect says he's already made the changes, right? Or some of the changes. So half of that, some of that has been done. And second of all, we've been, in, in our briefings have been told that as soon as the redesign is done, it can go right straight to DRB in a week or two. So you won't be losing too much time or too much money. And, and actually, we're going to try to make sure that that happens, that if, if this is remanded, that you, you get your design, you get your place back in the line. You don't have to wait. So I would like to see more modulation, more articulation in this building. I would like to see the color palettes softened and everything the Design Review Board has, has conditioned. Let's see what it looks like when that gets done, and let's let Design Review Board make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilmember Najarian, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, I mean, I agree with, with a lot of the comments. What I'd like, up to a point, I'd like to see a new rendering of this with all those conditions addressed, but I don't want to send it to the DRB. I want to send it back to council. Let's, because whatever happens at DRB, look, it's going to be appealed one way or the other. Let's just bring it back to us. We serve as DRB for the downtown, formerly the redevelopment zone, the downtown center. Bring it back to us. If we like it, we like it. If not, we tell them what to do. Because this is a black hole for this guy. He's going to go there. DRB's already said what they want. They want those 15 conditions. If they approve those conditions, then Mr. Michaels is going to say, "No, we know that those are the conditions. We still don't like it. We're going to appeal it back up to us." So let's just bring it back here. We, we can do it, right? I mean, why don't we do it?
If I may, if I may just say something, it may take them longer, though, to come back to us than it does to go to DRB.
But it's not going to end at DRB. This building isn't going to end at DRB. This is going to be appealed by either the applicant or, or the six homeowners associations that were, that had chimed in on this. Let's bring it back here where the rubber meets the road, final decision and not play around. Let, not make Grant Michaels pay another $2,000 for another appeal. Or Mr. Basmagian, another month or two for carrying cost. Bring it back here. Bring it back to us. We're all commenting on the design right now. Why don't we see what the revisions are and make our own decision and either up or down? That's my opinion. I mean.
Any, any other comments, Councilmember? All right, so a, a lot has already been said by, by different members of the council. I think all good points. I think everyone recognizes the need for housing and how our hands are somewhat tied with the laws passed by Sacramento and SB 1818 allowing for density. And certainly, there is a need for housing in, in the state and in the region, and we have to find the best way to make that fit into the communities that preserve the character, that provide a diverse stock of housing. Certainly, in terms of the community plan, I found it interesting, obviously, I'm coming to this as a council member relatively new, although I've been in council chambers during much of these discussions, but from what I can, what I understood is that the community plans, in order for it to be consistent with the community plan, that what you've observed in that area is that there really isn't any consistency. And, and what I find a bit troubling about that is that how do you then establish consistency if you don't impose some more clear guidelines? It has been stated by Mr. Nazarian and Mr. Basmagian that they have tried to work with staff, so then the question to me is, well, who was confused about what it is that the community wants in their community plan? You know, mentions, you know, we have one person who, the appellant, who's speaking for the community, saying they want river rock, and staff is, if we're to take everyone at their word, which I do, has worked closely with the other architect and designer in coming up with this current design, or a design, I should say, that we haven't yet seen, right? Because Mr. Nazarian has said that he has some documents that we have not seen or staff has not seen but do exist. There's also merit for what Councilmember Najarian is saying is about us putting a final stamp of approval on this, because whether it goes to Design Review or it comes here, ultimately, it's six and one-half dozen. And let me ask the city attorney, if there happens to be a deadlock tonight, what ends up happening to this issue?
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council, so if there is a motion and that motion is voted on as 2-2, and there's no other, no substitute motion or no subsequent motion, and there's no taking another vote on that, then that item would carry over, per the charter, by the way, it would carry over on the agenda. Per the charter, by the way, it would carry over on the agenda every successive meeting until either there's a change in one of the votes or it comes to a point where, for example, Mayor Agajanian can participate, which I understand is not until May. Or if it's taken off calendar.
So there you have it, folks. One way or another, it seems like this will come back. It's either going to go, it can go to DRB. It could keep coming back until it comes, until we get to May. Or it can come back to council with new schematics and designs. To me, it seems like the simplest thing here would be for us to see the changes that have been implemented, that the DRB has, that the board asked to have done and for it to either come back to us and for us to look at what that is. It would have been great to have seen it this evening. I don't know why we haven't seen it. But, you know, whether I support this or not, which I do support it in concept, we're going to have to revisit this somehow. So let me ask my colleagues whether any of them want to put, to get, put forth a motion in a second or in lieu of that, what may end up being a somewhat pointless exercise if legal counsel, our city attorney, could recommend a different path to move forward with. Councilmember Brotman, you have the floor.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would make a motion that we remand this back to the Design Review Board. I don't think it will necessarily come back to us again. I think, I think this can be taken care of at that level. I hope it can. It'll be a test, but I want to be hopeful about that. So I, and I think, you know, they're the experts. I think they need to do a review of the North Glendale Community Plan so that they all understand what the plan calls for. I think that those conditions that were discussed, which I think were agreed on by pretty much everybody, if those are addressed appropriately, I think that the Design Review Board can hopefully get to a unanimous decision on this and that that cannot have to take that long, especially if staff can commit to, you know, scheduling this as soon as, as the new renderings are available. So I would, I would make the motion to remand it to the DRB with instructions to turn this around, you know, as quickly as possible, working with the architect and the owner.
Councilmember Divine, you have the floor. Thank you, Councilmember Brotman.
Thank you. Well, before I second Mr. Brotman's motion, I want to ask Mr. Michaels, since you are the lead on this appeal. If the architect comes back and does all of the 14 conditions, makes all of those changes, and Design Review Board okayes it, approves it, would you be satisfied or do you want more?
The largest concern is the mass and scale of the third story. So if, again, we are not going to talk about the architectural style, but if we can find a way so that there actually is a transition and a proportion to the rest of the neighborhood, particularly with that third story, that would be something that would satisfy us. Again, we've acknowledged that this is an appropriate location for affordable housing and would like to see this project go forward. We just don't feel that the mass and scale of this boxy design is compatible with the neighborhood or the North Glendale Community Plan.
Thank you.
So what I was going to ask, I'm sorry, Mr. Kusakian. So if a condition like that is put in and they work with that, is that possible, Mr. Toledo? Toledo? Noka? Any other names I got?
Now you got it right.
Covered all of them, okay.
Councilmember Divine, if you can just please repeat that question. I want to make sure I got it down correctly. Can you repeat your question?
Yes. If, what Mr. Michaels is asking for with this design, this change of design, this transition with the rooftop, I guess it is, is that a possibility? And could we list that as a condition so that when the architect does redesign this building to make the, to meet the conditions of the Design Review Board plus this one, that they would, they would be, I will, I don't want to say happy with it, but they would be satisfied that there were changes made to make this building more compatible? Is that possible? Mute.
Sorry about that. I think it would be prudent to have the revisions presented first before we can respond because the one concern would be, would that change at all compromise or conflict with the approved concession as it relates to the height in stories? That would be, again, one of the concerns that would be presented. So again, without seeing the revisions, it would be difficult for me to answer in an affirmative manner.
Councilmember Divine, any other comments before I, I think Councilmember Najarian wants to jump in.
So, I mean, this is why we have to see it. You can't say it's too high and then say that they have the 1818 concession because it's, even if it doesn't fit with the general plan or the specific plan, I think the SB 1818 concession takes priority, is of greater force than the design standards of the plan. That's why it has to come back to us. DRB will vote one way or the other. It's going to end up in front of us anyway. Let's just cut to the chase and see it. And Mr. Garcia, if it's 2-2, the appeal fails, right? Why?
That, Councilmember.
Why'd you say it keeps coming back? It's an appeal that fails, doesn't it?
Councilmember Najarian, so that is the normal rule in California. The 2-2, basically, the appeal fails and the project moves forward. But as you may recall, under the charter, we have that unique provision that says any 2-2 tie on any matter comes back until it's resolved one way or the other. So, and I would just note that.
So I guess my question would be, Mr. Garcia, as to be the most expeditious way of resolving this issue between the applicant and the appellant that would both address the issues of the recommendations that Design Review Board made, that staff has worked with, that can then move the project forward that everyone agrees should be moving forward?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I do think it's a policy decision whether you want to have the DRB look at the project as it's been redesigned to comply with the 15, 15 conditions that DRB put in. Or if you want the council to do that.
Then let me ask this. By remanding it to the Design Review Board, a couple of questions. How early would the Design Review Board be able to hear it? What would the cost be? Would this be starting from scratch for the applicant?
I would need either Ms. Toledo or someone from staff to answer. I do believe the remand is not treated as a new hearing as long as you're remanding it specific, for a specific purpose, like what's been suggested, which is to, you know, design the project in accordance with the 15 conditions and not a full redesign. I've heard the word redesign. I think that's a new, that's a new hearing. But if you're remanding it for a limited purpose, I think you go back to DRB without starting anew. But then staff would have to answer the question of the timing. How far?
Please, yes.
So can I come to respond regarding the timing? Couple of things that come to mind is, first, we need to look at it, right? Meeting our staff internally. We do need to prepare a new staff report. So again, a little tab there. And the other question would be, would this require new public noticing? If so, that we need to meet those deadlines, which again puts us out a few more weeks.
Okay. Well, so let me, let me just say this. There's a couple, there's a number of issues here going on. I think some of them could have been resolved had we all seen somewhat updated plans, a different color palette, whatever it may be, the updates on materials. But certainly, everyone agrees that Design Review Board suggestions were not entirely out of line. And we would all like to have seen what that looked like. This, by the way, warrants a discussion in the future about when such recommendations are made and there's an appeal and something comes before council to look at. I would like, as a councilperson, and I think my colleagues would agree, to see what those changes would look like. And I believe in the past on certain projects, we have. There is a motion. There is a second. For the sake of procedure, I will take, ask the city clerk to take roll and then we'll proceed with what the next steps are. Mr. Clerk, if you could please call roll on Councilmember Brotman's motion.
Can we just restate the general?
Yeah, I just want to get, what I heard was.
To remand it to the Design Review Board.
Correct. With, with the direction to present the design as required by the conditions imposed by DRB. That's what I heard. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are we ready?
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Mayor Protem Kusakian?
To keep it interesting, no. So now what do we do, Mr. City Attorney? This comes back potentially next week?
Somebody can make, a council member can make another motion, alternative motion. If no other motions are made or approved, then yes, this will come back, be on the agenda until next week or two weeks from now, two weeks from now.
Two weeks.
Bueller?
Do we have those new plans by two weeks? I mean, is that something we can at least look at? That Mr. Nazarian says he has to see if any of those conditions are incorporated yet or manifested?
I'm confident he'd be able to provide those tomorrow.
Because that may show us which way we're going. I mean, if we're, if it still is, it may give us some direction, I'm saying, to break this.
Okay. Can we do that? We bring those drawings back and add this? Actually, it would not be next week because we are dark next week. It would be in two weeks.
Be March 2nd. And I would just, if you're going to do that, just leave the hearing open and continue this till March 2nd with no further public notice.
Then that's, that is what we will do. Do we require a motion in a second to take that action? Or can we simply just leave it open?
It will carry over per the charter rule.
Okay. Per the charter rules, this will be carried over. Mr. Basmagian, Mr. Nazarian, and Mr. Michaels, we will see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can now go and have whatever beverage you want. Is Mr. Agajanian around?
We are fetching, we are going to get him.
What do we have? Just public comment, right?
Can I relinquish the, can I relinquish the gavel to him?
Take it. Just go with it, Artie. Go with it.
No, 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 no.
I do have a caller.
It's another fine mess you've gotten us into, Ollie. Is the mayor returning? If not, we can go ahead and take the calls.
Yes, we've just notified him to come back.
Okay.
Mayor Protem.
Nice job, Artie.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Just one caller. So Alec, Alec Barstrosov. You don't have to.
Hold on. Ladies and gentlemen. All right. I hope. Everything is resolved now. So where are we, Mr. City Clerk?
I would need to read oral communications and there is one caller. So item number 12 is oral communications.
Okay.
Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay. Do we have any phone calls first?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to the calls.
Alec Barstrosov. Alec?
Yes, thank you very much. I know it's late. I'll be very brief. Do I have the slides up?
I will put the slides up in a second. Alec, there you go.
Thank you. So my name is Alec Barstrosov, South Glendale resident. Wanted to talk to you very briefly about roadway safety. Next slide, please. So one of the things I wanted to commend the city on is the pedestrian master plan, which you'll be seeing very soon. One of the things that I wanted to highlight is that first bar there that shows that many residents in the community would walk more if speeds were reduced on our roadways. Next slide. One of the ways that the pedestrian plan suggests calming traffic is to do things like curb extensions, speed humps, traffic circles. All of these mitigations are ways to decrease vehicle speed and improve safety. Next slide. One of the things that are highlighted in the pedestrian plan is Louise Street in particular. It's a downtown adjacent street that sees particularly high speeds. And you can see in the concepts drawing, concept drawings that there's ways to slow down traffic by doing various mid-block improvements and also at the intersections as well. Next slide. And one of the ways we've done this really well so far in the city is exemplified at Jackson and Harvard, where you see really well-done curb extensions, high visibility crosswalks and always stop signs. Next slide. And I mentioned this in the context of downtown Glendale because we do have a lot of intersections that have always stopped. Unfortunately, the city may be considering turning these into signals, which would go contrary to the arguments that I just made that the pedestrian plan is proposing. Next slide. So you might see words like enhance traffic flow, reduce traffic delays, improve travel time and reduce fuel consumption. While these all sound nice, unfortunately, it translates to seeing more cars on our residential streets and faster cars on our residential streets. Next slide. And I want to be clear that the city does have options to do things other than signals. In fact, the state guidelines show that there are at least 14 different ways to look at intersections as an improvement. And one thing to keep in mind on the left side, it says frequency of some types of crashes are sometimes greater under traffic signal control than under stop sign control. So I just want to bring this to your attention that I'm very much concerned about traffic signals being introduced in our residential zones because it's going to. signals being introduced in our residential zones, because it's going to encourage more cut-through traffic, and quite often and regularly at a higher speed. So, I'm very much concerned about that. I'm hoping that US Council can keep an eye on proposals that may suggest traffic signals and look for ways to mitigate concern by not putting in traffic signals, which will encourage more traffic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alec. Is there any other call?
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Thank you. What's the next item on the agenda?
New business? We do have, we do have one item of new business, Mr. Mayor. If I could read the proposed motion and ask the council members to, to make it and second it. So, I'm seeking a motion that the city attorney is authorized to compromise and settle the claim filed by the city of Glendale, against the city of Glendale by Parkeia Inc., claim number 210-dash-0167. The Director of Finance is authorized to issue a warrant in the amount of $37,837 for delivery by the city attorney upon the execution by the claimant of a properly executed release.
Aye. Move it?
So moved.
Let's get them to move it in seconds.
Anybody wants to move it, is, is there-
I moved it.
I think-
So moved.
Okay, so we have the second also. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kazakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Okay, I think I have to go to, for a motion to adjourn, but we will close tonight in the memory of Ruby De Vera.
Yes.
De Vera.
De Vera.
De Vera, yeah.
And her-
I, I move to that we close our, adjourn our meeting in memory of the late Ms. De Vera.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. With that said, the meeting is adjourned at 11:37 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, all.
Bye, good night.